deserve it. Good morning, everyone. We are awaiting Commissioner Gonzalez. He's on his way. We're going to get housekeeping out of the way. Everyone's done such a good job on social distancing. I sure do appreciate that. There's lots of good chairs in the hallway and you will be ushered in if you're listening to this. As somebody, if you make a presentation and you would yield to somebody else to come in, that would be great. But right now, we can still handle a few more people in the front rows. Good morning, good morning. And you're good to go on the remote? Everything looks good? If that's the case, we'll go ahead and gavel us in and ask that you rise, please, for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to Texas flags. Commissioner Gonzalez, would you like to lead us in invocation this morning?
For God, Heavenly Father, up to you again today just to give you thanks for everything you've given us, blessings, help us to reach out to those that need help. Thank you, Lord, for healing those that are sick, families that have lost loved ones. Thank you, Lord, for mission and support, you with the strength and the will to do other right things, right reasons. Lord, we give you thanks. We continue to give you thanks for everything you do, every day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you for the lovely prayer and for everyone being here this morning. It's 9:07 a.m. It is October the 7th, 2020. We are on the third floor of Commissioners' courtroom in the Nuasis County Courthouse, 901 North Leopard. And for the clerk, I do certify that all commissioners are present and therefore we have maintained a quorum. Commissioner Chesney is participating remotely. For those of you watching us on television, welcome Commissioner Chesney. Timothy, would you take us through an important safety briefing?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, ma'am. We're meeting here today on the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse, 901 Leopard Street. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the courtroom past the Human Resources Office. Please note, there's a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom. There are also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom next to the Human Resources Office. Participants today responsible for dialing 911 will be Tynor. Participants CPR certified in attendance are Dale and myself. However, keep in mind, anyone can render aid. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be down the atrium stairs proceeding through the doors located on the LaPond Street side of the courthouse and assemble in the parking lot across the street. Should there be a need to shelter in place, participants will remain in the courtroom. Depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom's double doors will be secured and remain secured until given further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our shared safety topics for today, this week, October 4th through the 10th of 2020 is National Fire Prevention Week. That concludes my brief.
Thank you so much, Timothy. At this time, Tynor, I'd like to begin our public comment. And if there is a sign-up sheet, I'll take it at this time, Timothy. And also, I already know, because I looked earlier, that Judge Missy Mederi is with us and Ministry of Judge, the Fifth Region, and she's going to make an announcement. But I also will let you know, Tynor, that I'm looking, it looks like we might have some folks online as well. But I'd like to start with Judge Mederi, if it pleases the court here. Judge, welcome.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners, or good morning, sorry. I feel like I've been up since 5 o'clock this morning, which I have been. I just wanted to say that your judges, as you know, have been working throughout the pandemic. We have come up with plans in order to keep the courts running through Zoom, as you all know. What we are doing now is we have now been tasked by the Supreme Court to create a jury plan. The jury plan has to be submitted to the regional presiding judges in every 254 of our counties. What we decided is, or when we started to work on this plan, we started talking about whether or not we would have masks and whether or not we would have face shields for our jurors in order to keep everyone safe. We also wanted to explain to the jurors out there that we are trying to make sure that the courthouse is as safe as possible for anyone coming in and still weighing, obviously, the constitutional rights of everybody involved. We ran into a little bit of a snag when we started to order face shields. And we were told that the face shields were behind order by two or three months and the Supreme Court is asking or tasking us to start jury trials faster than that. And so as Fifth Region Presiding Judge, I reached out to the Office of Court Administration and I said, hey, we need some help down here in Nuasis County because we cannot proceed forward without these face masks. And I just wanted to let the Commissioners know and county judge know that the Office of Court Administration has absolutely come through for Nuasis County. They have shipped off 2,000 face shields to us. We received them yesterday or the day before and they will be distributed to all of the district courts, all of the county courts, as well as the juvenile courts in order to be prepared for jury trials, even though we are not starting those right away. But we will be able to have those when we start in order to not only keep all of the staff safe, but more importantly, all of the litigants, all of the attorneys and all of the jurors. So I just wanted to kind of update the Commissioners' Court, the county judge, in regards to what we have done as your district judges and what we have done with OCA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge, and I'll just sign myself up to say one word, bravo. Thank you. Tynor, at this time, I don't have anybody listed on my papers, but I was going to ask you if you would take a look. Sometimes people are waiting for actual agenda items. Sometimes they're just being good citizens and listening in. Do you believe there's anybody who's raised their hand to speak at public comment?
The only one, Judge, that I see would be Lisa Tomez, possibly. I recognize the other numbers and they're here for items.
Well, Lisa, if you are here to just join in and watch, welcome. If you are here to make public comment, if you would indicate that by, she can raise her hand, correct? Okay. Lisa, if you're here to make public comment, we would invite you to do so at this time. If not, no worries, welcome. Okay, hearing no public comment, at this time, we will move on. Give it just a little bit as we get organized. I like that there's still things that we can do in technology to make it better. So whoever is in charge of the applications for Zoom, they should figure out an easier way, right, Connie, and how to say, I'm here. At this time, we do have general information reports and we also have some important resolutions. And if it's your pleasure, so that we can, they are waiting online. If you would allow me, Kathy, the patience of moving two minutes and resolutions, I'll come back to those reports. At this time, Commissioners, we do have a motion, not a motion, I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. We have some amazing resolutions this month and proclamations and they are titled number one, two, three, and four on your agenda. And I'd like to start with Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I did notice that we had a member of the American Cancer Society, I think, is on hold. So we'll come back there. But we'll give Tynor here just a second. Tynor, if you need me to go back to Kathy, no worries. I just wanted to see if, here we go. Okay. And of course, everybody knows, I did my best. I've got a little bit of purple. I've got my pink mask. Today, this is October and everybody knows what October is, right? We go pink for the ladies.
And Judge, for your information, we have Kayla on the Zoom meeting with the American Cancer Society.
Welcome, Kayla.
And she helped us with this resolution. And I'd like to begin.
Yes, sir.
Whereas, the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Program is the largest network of breast cancer awareness events in the nation, uniting nearly 300 communities with a shared determination to finish the fight against breast cancer. Whereas, funds raised through the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer of Corpus Christi and Abel, the American Cancer Society, to save lives from breast cancer by funding groundbreaking breast cancer research, providing free, comprehensive information and support to those touched by breast cancer and helping people reduce their breast cancer risk or find it early when it's most treatable. Whereas, participants of the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer of Corpus Christi join together to celebrate breast cancer survivors, pay tribute to those lost to the disease, and raise funds to end breast cancer once and for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County, Texas hereby proclaims October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and October 17th as Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Day in Nuasis County and encourages citizens to help finish the fight against breast cancer by participating in the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer of Corpus Christi Cruisin' Because of COVID event at La Palmera Mall on Saturday, October 17th.
Thank you, Tynor. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve.
Approve. And did I hear Commissioner, a second? And a second. And is there any discussion? I know that we have Kayla on. Would you like to make some comments? She might just be here for support. We'll give her, we'll give it just a moment. I just want to say that time really does pass quickly, just like your mom and dad always told you, everything would go by in the blink of an eye. But I remember the first time I heard about the Susan G. Coman Foundation. And I remember thinking it was the love of a sister, Nancy Brinker, who formed the Susan G. Coman Foundation from Dallas. And the unbelievable worldwide spread of going pink has really changed our ability to raise funds for doctors and researchers to make major breakthroughs. And no longer is it a death sentence to hear that you have breast cancer. And in fact, if detected early, you have an excellent chance of beating it quickly. So it is definitely a difficult road for many, many women, but it's one that has prevention by getting your mammogram. So I just want to say thank you to the American Cancer Society for all of the awareness, the prevention, the raising of funds for continued treatments, and we always hope a cure. So again, it's just, it's from the acts of the simple act of love that a worldwide movement was born. And I just find that so inspirational. And Tynor, Ms. Kayla, was she prepared to make a statement?
We're having a few technical difficulties with the sound.
We're going to move on, but we'll bring her right back. But let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. We're going to hold her place, okay? And again, to all our county employees, let's go pink for the month of October and raise lots of awareness for breast cancer, which by the way, affects men as well. National 4H Week is also this week, Tynor. Will you take us through National 4H Week? Here come my green jackets. Right. And again, Kayla, hang on. We're going to get this organized. This is wonderful. If you guys, yeah, would just flank the room, stay six feet apart, or you know, give yourself some social distance, come around. We're so happy to see you, have you here. It's a special week in October. And Tynor, tell us about it.
This is about National 4H Week, October 4th through 10th, 2020. Whereas, Nuasis County is proud to honor the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service for 113 years for providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. Whereas, this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. Whereas, there is more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to 19 that hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. Whereas, the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. Whereas, throughout its proud history, the 4H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and inspiring programs continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nuasis County Commissioners' Court hereby designates October 4th through 10th, 2020 as National 4H Week in Texas and commends the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success.
Thank you, Commissioners. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there someone who might like to make some comments? Kyle, is that you?
How are y'all this morning?
We're great.
Good. We always appreciate y'all's support of our program and always like to be proud of showcasing our individuals. We have about 13 of them here. I think it goes without saying that we have true leaders in this program and representing this county. And I thought about it this morning as to what I could say to y'all that maybe you don't already know. And the best thing I can reference is, you know, our motto. And so our motto is one of those that the kids go out and do lots of things in the community and to make the best better is the motto. And so that's what they do, whether it's the beach cleanup, whether it's volunteering in our local organizations that need assistance. When there's a call for them, these kiddos step up. And in my mind, I may be biased, but I think they're the pillars of our community and the future leaders. And we are proud to be representative of Nuasis County and representing y'all as Commissioners and the judge. And proud to have them here to kind of maybe get to introduce themselves. If y'all have a moment, each one can go. I will tell y'all that as far as leadership is concerned in these kids, we have well-rounded leaders at the club level, at the county level, at county council, at the district level. We have one individual that is actually the president of the district council and he also got elected on state council. So we are well-represented from the base all the way up. And we have individuals that go and do community service projects at the county here, at the district level. We have one young lady that went all the way and went to Costa Rica and did a project with Heifer International and served an underprivileged community. So we're very active and proud to boast that for Nuasis County. So thank y'all for all that you do. We always bring y'all some cookies and munchies. We haven't set them out yet because we needed some direction. We had them pre-made and pre-sealed. There's boxes. So if we either leave them with y'all today, or we can leave them with Monica in the office and just distribute them.
Yes, Monica, right there by my office. That's exactly where they go.
Please, no, Commissioners, we do. And we have the box for Dale's office and also for Kara's office. So we will have some for all of y'all as well. So we'll let one line come through and around and introduce themselves real quickly and then we'll get the other one and maybe a photo op.
We'd love that.
Good morning. My name is Malia Loa. I am 14 years old and a freshman at Cal Allen High School. I've been participating in 4H for seven years now. This is my third year as an ambassador and I'm also a county council officer. Thank you.
My name is Jenna Floyd. I am 16 years old. I'm a junior at Cal Allen High School. I've been doing 4H for eight, nine years. I've lost track. And then I've been doing ambassadors for, I think this is my fourth year to do ambassadors.
Howdy, y'all. I'm Annabelle Borgo. I am a sophomore at Cal Allen High School. I'm 15. I've been a county ambassador for four years. I've been a shooting sports ambassador for two years and I am also a county council officer treasurer.
My name is Jackson Grove. I'm a junior at London High School. I'm a member of London 4H. I'm the third vice president of the Nuasis County Council for 4H and I'm a state water ambassador.
Hi, I'm Jack Foskey. I'm 15 years old. I'm a sophomore at Academy High School and I go to Driscoll 4H and I've been ambassador for four years.
Okay, good morning. My name is Kylie Hemken. I am a senior at Bencetti High School. I am my Annabelle 4H Club's vice president. I am a county ambassador. I am the second vice president of county council. I am a Texas 4H livestock ambassador and I was the girl that went to Costa Rica for the Globe Project.
Tynor, your phone is ringing. Let me let Tynor turn it off, just so we can not interrupt you. Hang on one second. It's got a funny case. There we go. We got you.
The county phone. Turn it back in.
Okay, super. All right. No worries. We just want to make sure the kids get center stage.
Hi, my name is Reese Richardson. I am a senior at Cal Allen High School. This is my 10th year in 4H. I am president of the Nuasis County Trappin' Sheep Club. I'm also a member of the Annabelle 4H Club. I show sheep and goats. I am president of county council. I am chairman of the District 11 4H Council and I am second vice president of the State 4H Council.
Wow.
As well as a Texas Youth Livestock Ambassador.
Hello, my name is Jack Spore. Health is my main 4H project and I am a state health ambassador. I am a 16-year-old junior and it's nice to see y'all.
Good morning. My name is Abby Evans. This is my eighth year in 4H and my first year being ambassador. I am a junior at London High School, but I am the first county delegate at Flower Bluff Padre Island 4H.
All right. Commissioner Chesney, first one. Flower Bluff.
Hello, my name is Beth Spore. This is my eighth year in 4H. I'm a freshman and I'm homeschooled and I'm a state health ambassador and I'm the president of my club.
Hello, my name is John Hartzell. I'm 14 years old and I'm a freshman at Flower Bluff High School. And I'm the first vice president of Flower Bluff Padre Island 4H. And this is my first year being an ambassador. This is my fifth year being 4H.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Chloe Atwater. I'm 15 years old. I am a junior and I'm a homeschooler. I am first vice of Nuasis 4H Archery and Beachside. I am also a secretary for county ambassadors as well as a county ambassador, as well as a state shooting sport ambassador and a national ambassador for state shooting sports, my bad. And I'm also on the county council.
Hi, I'm Julia Gilliam. I am a junior at Flower Bluff. I'm the president of Flower Bluff Padre Island 4H Club. I've been in 4H for eight years now and I have been an ambassador for five. I'm also on the county council. I'm the secretary for county council. Thank you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, you did a great job of introducing yourself. And some of you I know really well because we've now shared several years together. And for some of you that I'm meeting for the first time, welcome to Commissioners' Court. You're always welcome here. You are a true ambassador for Nuasis County. Every time I see the green jacket, I know that you're right, Kyle. It's not just that they're pillars of our community and our county. They could run this county. And that's what makes me feel so good. I want to share with you that I'm really, when the weather gets to be as beautiful as it is, I don't know about you, but all I can think about is livestock show. It's coming. And I know it's going to be different. And I want you guys to know, I'm catching some feedback here. I want you guys to know that it doesn't matter if it's going to be different. It's going to be better than ever because you're going to be there. And all of the people that, you know, the kids in the clubs, over 2,000 kids that are represented, we're going to make it work. And whatever obstacles we have, put them out of your mind. Just think about ways through, ways around. We're going to find a way to do this together and still raise a bunch of money. One of the things that I was going to let you guys know is that we're going to make some really important improvements, we think. Want to maybe pay attention, Kyle, to later on in the agenda, about the fairgrounds. And those are your fairgrounds. It's home base for you. And I just think that it's time and it's going to be a really important opportunity to invest in your future again. Because you know what I know about the green jacket? They come back. It's like full cycle. I know it's hard to believe, but one day, I bet your children will be wearing those green jackets. You come back and give again and again. And it's just such a beautiful thing about our county that we see this time and time again. So I'm excited for your season. This is your week in our county, but I'm excited for the whole season that really culminates in January. We are going to move night in all Nuasis to February, I think. So we think that's in everybody's best interest. And I'm looking for ambassadors to be with us, Kyle, on many different occasions. State of the County was just set by the Chamber of Commerce, so we'll want to get with you on that date. We have a legislative session coming up. I'm going to have a legislative conference that the county is hosting. We're going to post it so all Commissioners can come. I would love for you all to send two ambassadors or whatever Kyle thinks is appropriate to come and share your story and your needs during this COVID-19 crisis with our legislative representatives. They need to hear from you. We got, we lost out a lot on a lot, didn't we, last year, on major stock shows and, you know, they need to hear from you. So we want to invite you to that. And there was one other thing that I wanted to say. Oh, there's a new group, not too new, it's been in existence for a year, but it's called the Nuasis County Development Commission. And as you guys were introducing yourselves, I was thinking how important it would be for them to get to know you and your leadership as they promote livestock show in upcoming months. And so that's a special group. It belongs to Nuasis County. They're housed out of a different building, but we'll get you set up. But I think that would be great. And then I wanted to ask the Commissioners who know you so well if they wanted to make some comments. Commissioner?
Well, you are one of my most favorite groups that come, not just because you bring the treats, you just really are. We should be so proud because you really are the hope of our future. And if you're any example of what our future's going to be, I'm so proud and great leaders. Some of you may be sitting up here, may be sitting on city council one of these days, but your program is just fantastic. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all for being here and being part of the leadership of the county. You are the leadership now. And one day you may, and we hope that you will be up here. And I was smiling from ear to ear. You can probably tell under my mask, but I was. Every time that we celebrate 4H, every time we have a chance to be with you, it shows us what is good and right in our county and in our country. And so we thank you all for the leadership you have, the leadership you're continuing to develop, and the leadership that you're encouraging to bring out of others, whether it be family members or friends, classmates, those that you know, to continue to support this great program. to continue to support this great program. Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez, and we'll end with you, Commissioner Chesney.
I just want to say thank you for your wanting to be involved in the community for your leadership skills. But don't forget the most important thing, education. Education, education, education. That's your future, and that's what you're going to become. So no matter what you do in life, you've got to have that education, right? So just stay with it, get your good grades, and keep on going to college. Congratulations, and God bless you.
Thank you. And to all the parents and the volunteers and the Ag Extension Agency and all your folks, really, I mean, you guys know, all the ambassadors know. Could you do it without them? You really couldn't. I mean, they're so proud of you, and we like to lift you guys up as the praise you deserve. But the truth is, is that I told someone, when we say we're all in this together, it only has meaning if it's real. And what's real is look who accompanies you here. Parents and your mentors and all the volunteers that help make all of those clubs possible. So I just want to encourage you to take time to have a moment of gratitude. It's incredible when you give gratitude how much you get back. So if you'll share that with your club members to make sure that you have October coming into November as a season of thanks and giving, and gratitude is the greatest gift of all. That's all your parents or your mentors or your volunteers ever need. It's really as simple as that, so. Again, thank you. Commissioner Chesney, thank you. I'm so used to having him here.
Hold on, commish, we're going to get some volume on you.
Give us one second here. Is it that one? Can you speak again, Commissioner? Try it again, Brent. Oh, that's worse. No, we're getting, I can hear you, but it's very faint. Just give us a second. You know, technology is awesome, and yet it's not.
While we're waiting, I will add to this. As you heard them talk, a lot of them mentioned they're state ambassadors in different areas. I want y'all to know what that means a little bit. Is that these individuals apply with other youth across the state, and they go through an application process, an interview process, a background screening in terms of an agent being able to process them. And then they end up getting selected. And normally, in one year, it's a class of 20 to 25. And so a water ambassador learns all about water and water management. A photography ambassador learns all about the skills of photography, and they get turned back in their community. We've got livestock ambassadors. We, every discipline that exists within the 4H program, we have at least one state ambassador in Nuasis County that's gone through that process and then has continued to recruit, and we get more and more. So I wanted y'all to know, as y'all hear that, it's got a neat name and a state title, but I want y'all to know, really, the meat and potatoes behind it is they become very skilled and educated. They go to, normally it's hosted at a university, and they go through some intensive training over a week, and then they get returned back into their community, go become a volunteer, and put on different educational workshops and clinics. So we're very blessed, the health aspect as well. So we have all those different disciplines that are covered. And it takes a village within our own office. It's whether it's Norma with the health aspect or Jason and the Ag aspect. All of our agents, the office, support the 4H program. I do want to thank them for all their support to allow our youth to be able to really flourish and grow.
Thank you for that. So that means our health ambassadors have learned all about, I'm guessing, public health? Yeah? Yeah, so what a time in your life to understand all that there is to know about health. If we can ever be of assistance as a resource here, for those of you that are water ambassadors, we're about to embark in a first-ever Nuasis County, it's actually multi-jurisdictional watershed basin study. For those of you that are interested in health, honestly, the public health endeavors that are happening right now, I pray you never see them again in your lifetime. But if you want to know more, you can come to work for a day here. If you want to shadow, anything like that, Kyle, that would be great. I'm not sure what the other ones were. Photography, the best we can do is Commissioner Vaughn, we want you to look at the beautiful photography that she made possible here. But if there are ways that we can hook up, what I'd like to do is Commissioner Chesney, how about just get him on the phone, and I put him to the microphone, just so he can make comments and the kids can get on their day? Brent, I'm going to call you. You give me, give me just a second. I'm calling you on your cell. Never mind, Brent.
You've reached my voice now. I can't take your call.
I'll try again.
Hold on, he's going to answer this time.
I'll leave those cookies with Monica.
Much better for everybody. Go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, hear you great, loud and clear.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I appreciate the, let me do this.
Go ahead and mute yourself.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you very much, the Ford, with such an important release. And we appreciate y'all being here. And I would just, I want to say this very clearly. Tyner, stay away from my, just don't eat my cookies.
I'll stay away.
We really do appreciate everything that y'all do.
Take it away from there, Tyner. 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 So look, we had a bad feed, but he's passing on his things. And really, all of us feel so committed to your organization. So I just want to say this, yesterday, I'm always one, like, paper behind because I get the paper in the evening when I come home because I leave early, and then I look at it. So last night, when I opened it up, did anyone look at the front page of the paper? Well, it's Island Joe's. And he's got this, his name's Brian Tumlinson, and he's got this picture of, the whole article is about, if you bring in a bag of trash, you get a great cup of brew, coffee, brewed coffee. Of course, everyone knows Island Joe's has the greatest coffee. So it's a big perk. But you know who started that? Julia, you started that. Okay, I mean, we talked about this. We said if we do something, we can have a ripple effect, and maybe others will pick it up. That's what happened. If you read the first paragraph, he says, "Because of the beach cleanup, I decided that we could all keep up with this endeavor." And so, you know, I know most of you guys are Aggies and love Aggies, but you know what, not everybody, okay, thank God. Okay, I love Aggies. But listen, at the University of Texas, we have a saying, and it says, "What starts here changes the world." Now, I'm proud of my alma mater like y'all are proud of the Aggies. It doesn't matter because we're from Texas, and Texas sayings become all of our sayings. So I just want you to know, what 4H started is changing our world in our backyard. And I think y'all should be real proud of that. And anyway, keep me posted on all the good stuff happening. And we will make sure that as many of us will divide and conquer, as many of us that can come out to all the events will be there. And anyway, Kyle, where are you? Thanks again. Thanks, Kyle. And to Jason and the whole gang. Bye, bye, thanks. Y'all stay safe. That's always like such a great feeling, right? To have the kids back in the courtroom? Haven't we missed that? We have National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And did we vote? We didn't vote on it when they were gone? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye on the 4H week. Aye, okay. National disability, and it looks like we're good to go now on the.
No, Chesney said aye.
Oh, Chesney said aye too, thank you. National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
I'll go ahead and begin, Judge.
Tyner, hang on.
No, he can't.
Brent, it's super faint. I know we're going to have to work on this.
I apologize to the court for the technical difficulties today.
Look, let us, we're listening for you. Let us get through the two proclamations, and then I'm going to make a suggestion that we take a five-minute break to try to figure out how we can get him back on volume, okay? And we actually also have a request to go into executive session early for the benefit of one of our electeds. So at any rate, let's get through these proclamations. Is that acceptable, Brent? Because I can hear you. All right, National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Go ahead, Tyner.
Whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. Whereas, in this spirit, Nuasis County is recognizing the 75th observance of National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. Whereas, activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirm Nuasis County's commitment to an inclusive community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County hereby proclaims October 2020 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Nuasis County. And in doing so, the court calls upon employers, schools, and other community organizations in Nuasis County to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance this year's theme, increasing access and opportunity throughout the year.
Thank you, Tyner. Do I have a? Thank you, Commissioner Chesney, in a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, is there anybody here to speak upon this important Awareness Month for National Disability Employment Awareness Month? No? Well, let me just say that I think that one of the things that we're working towards, no, okay, is in general, just putting more focus on employees and making certain that all accommodations are made, whether they are accommodations in law, in physicality for people living with disabilities or people who have disabilities from the workplace. So I just, who, did somebody submit this?
The Coastal Bend Center for Independent Living.
Yeah.
Requested every year.
Right, it's a great thing to be mindful of. And I don't know, I guess I'm pretty sensitive to living with disabilities since my daughter has tremendous disabilities. And, you know, every day, I think she summed it up when she said, "Even people with disabilities recognize that there is always somebody who has it more difficult." And that's when you realize that we're living a pretty privileged and blessed life. Let's move on to another important awareness topic that also made the front page of our papers. I was proud to see Nuasis County standing strong for Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month and all the incredible purple ribbons. Will you have a resolution? And is there anybody from the DA's office present?
I don't believe so, but the Purple Door, which used to be the Women's Shelter,
Yes.
requested this item.
Great, great. Go ahead, please proceed.
The COVID-19 pandemic has increased safety threats to domestic violence victims all over the country, threats to their overall physical, mental, and emotional well-being. Online harassment, financial abuse has increased, according to the National Network to End Domestic Violence. Support has decreased, especially for those survivors who are marginalized by their race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, income, and geographic location areas where resources are sparse. Whereas, the National Domestic Violence Hotline has reported 6,210 total contacts answered March through May of 2020, citing COVID-19, representing a 9% increase in total contacts received than the prior year. Whereas, stay-at-home orders and remote work are not safe for victims living with their abuser. According to the National Domestic Violence Hotline, victims have experienced their abuser withholding stimulus checks, sabotaging employment, using COVID-19 to limit contact with family, friends, law enforcement, and the community, making it harder and more lethal for victims to leave. Therefore, the Purple Door encourages the Coastal Bend to lose the ribbon this October because prevention is action. We all have a responsibility to start the conversation and learn more about digital safety planning with our family, friends, and community members who may be experiencing domestic violence in isolation. We encourage everyone to reach out to the Purple Door or visit websites of the National Domestic Violence Hotline and the National Network to End Domestic Violence for resources on digital advocacy. Follow the Purple Door on Facebook and Instagram, @PurpleDoorTX, for more ways to get involved. The Purple Door serves all victims and survivors of domestic and sexual violence in the Coastal Bend with 24/7 safe emergency shelter, safety planning and case management, crisis counseling and intervention, legal advocacy, and a 24-hour hotline at 361-881-8888, or 1-800-580-HURT, H-U-R-T. All services are confidential, free of charge, available to those staying at the shelter and those residing elsewhere. All services available by remote contact during COVID pandemic. It is the mission of the Purple Door to empower the community and those affected by domestic violence and sexual assault to transition to a safe and healthy environment. It's the vision of the Purple Door to end domestic violence and sexual assault in the Coastal Bend. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nuasis County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? And I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. I know there was, as I said, a very large article, and I'm really proud of the fact that this court has assisted when asked to provide additional victim assistance coordinators for the district attorney's office. I know that that is something that we look at every year, and if there was any way to expand that in future years, we should do so. This is an important awareness month for all of those victims. And people forget, this is what this courthouse is really, we have sort of a two-tier courthouse, right? The tower is really built on the administration of justice. Everybody in that tower is really focused on justice. And this tower over here, the admin tower, is really more administrative. But I'm very proud that the Nuasis County courthouse has always taken a lead in this Awareness and Prevention Month. Commissioners, I know you have taken a good interest in the Purple Door. And commissioners, I don't know if you have anything to add here, but I am open to comments. I know, Lourdes, you would like to say something if you would yield. Is that all right, commissioners? County attorney?
Yes, thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I just want to continue informing the public that we are open for business. Basically, my responsibility is file protective orders on behalf of domestic violence victims. And we continue to do it, even though it is by Zoom, obviously. And we do address the situations when a person, a victim, cannot be, doesn't have any access to Zoom, we do it at our office. So we are open. You give us a call if you're experiencing some kind of domestic violence, and we're there to assist, we're there to help you. And again, we're open for business. We continue doing protective orders, and those numbers have increased. Right now, we are doing seven, five days a week. Normally, in the past, we have coordinated with legal services, but right now, they are shorthanded, so we're doing all the protective orders. So again, give us a call, 888-0391.
Thank you. And I will say too, from the court's perspective, these hearings are essential hearings and are being heard. So just because the courthouse is not having jury trials, just so you know, when it comes to matters of violence, those are essential hearings as deemed by the Office of Court Administration, and we do hear those cases. So, very, very important. Okay, if there's nothing further there, we can proceed to the consented. If there's nothing further there, we can proceed to the consent agenda. But I did, I did, I just want to throw this out for Laura. There is a regular agenda item, Laura, that, let me find it before I, it's way down there. It's E1, and our tax assessor has requested the opportunity to discuss this item, as it implies to personnel matters in executive session. And for his benefit on timing, I just wanted to say, would it be all right if we went through the consent agenda, but before we got to regular, go into executive session to deal, so I could give him enough time, you know, to come over here and participate?
We don't have it noticed, Judge. I don't know.
Something on the end.
Is it on E1?
E1.
And we have to discuss it behind doors or what?
Well, it is not noticed, but...
What is it, Judge?
It's noticed, E1, to seek legal. In other words, it's E1, the Human Resources, it's all the reclasses. I mean, we can do it, we can do it in open.
I'm in executive session, so that's just in open session, Judge.
Okay.
If he wants to talk about a personal matter, we will place it on the agenda for next court.
You want to table it?
No, I think we should just go ahead and call it up. Why don't you give him a text that will handle it after the consent agenda? And then if there's a matter that he believes that needs to be handled only in executive session within his discussion, then we can do that.
Next agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Table.
That okay, Tyner? All right, so let's go back to the consent agenda. And I tell him, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to guesstimate, depending on what gets pulled out, so just give me a moment to see. All right, on the consent agenda, Commissioners, we have items A through double B, A, is that right? Hold on, double L, double L. A through double L, LL. And I would ask at this moment for a opportunity, for a motion to approve.
I'd like to pull O, Joe.
Absolutely.
Judge.
And then...
I'd like to pull B.
B is in, Barbara?
B is in boy, yeah.
Yeah, got it.
E.
E, okay.
LL.
LL, got it.
And double, double A.
Double A. Okay, do I have a motion to approve all of the others? And I can list them for the clerk. It's A, C, D, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, and Z, and then B, B through K, K. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who signed. And Brent is an aye. And we're hearing you, Brent. And if you need to speak on any of these, I am hearing you, and we are so sorry that we have IT working on this on the backend. So when you need to speak upon a matter, we're going to do the phone trick, okay?
Okay.
And I can hear you, it's just the audience is really going to struggle to hear you. Okay, so number, not number, but letter B, Commissioner Gonzalez, the authorization of the payment of bills?
Yeah, on the consolidated check, I'm looking at that, and it said, there's a check there for $400, $400 for website. I thought, I don't know, is that a different company? Because, you know, we've got people here that are supposed to be working on websites, you know, so, and then we're paying somebody else for websites, so, you know, a lot of people here have a job description on websites. So is that something separate that we pay for?
Okay, would it be possible, would you pass it to me? And I'm going to ask Dale to assist, because I need to give him an invoice number. So this is JNS Website Designs for $400, and Dale, I'm looking at page seven, I'm just going to pass it to him.
I have it here.
Okay.
This is a company that our IT department uses to, because we're, I think, we're still working on the official side of our website. I think we went from one company to another company for certain aspects. I can definitely work with this and work with Lance to see what this is. But this is our official design of our webpage, that we've gone through many, many levels that we've got on our system to try to make it more ADA compliant. So I'll definitely work with Lance to see what this is for.
And we can ask Lance to come back in. But let me just say that website design is, so I think you're referring to the Granicus, so we have, you know, Granicus is kind of our main platform, and we use that, but I'm certain that they, this is probably a generalization of whatever the work is, but if you'll give us a chance, we'll ask Lance what this was for, and he can come back. And sometimes he's listening, so let's see if he gives us, if you don't mind?
No, I don't mind.
Give us just a minute?
My deal was, when I saw that, I said, man, we pay people for websites here in the counties, what's going on? Why are we using somebody else when we're supposed to be?
Well, most likely, it had to do with some specific design, but let's find out from Lance.
That's fine.
Yeah, just give him, give him a chance. And then let's move to the next one while I text him, okay? The next one is the Accenture one, and I can probably answer anything. And I was actually going to ask Maggie, if she's listening, if the Commissioners got their notebooks on Accenture.
No, I didn't.
So we're going to see, we can bring you the notebooks on this, but if you have a question, I can help answer it.
This is the first time I see this, as far as...
Right. This comes through emergency management and our emergency.
120,033, 333, bi-weekly.
Right.
And that's for only data?
No, sir, it's not. It would probably take, I'll tell you what, we can, I can address this probably best in our COVID-19 response, but Accenture is our county's program manager that's been working through July, I mean, excuse me, since July. And they have about a team of like 20 different people that are working in about 10 different areas, from testing platforms and just a tremendous amount of work that has gone into program management, case management, analytics, testing, vaccine management preparation. It is literally the work behind our COVID-19 response. And what I did ask, here comes Maggie, is for her to prepare a notebook.
There was three reports, I guess, a report July 31st, August 14th, August 31st.
The notebooks are ready, okay? Where are they?
I've never seen any, I've never seen any reports either.
Well...
That's why I was asking, what, are the reports ready?
Right, so what I think I'd like to do is tell you that this is a contract that is one of those that gets ratified here out of an abundance of transparency. It's a, it's a contract that I sign as the emergency manager for our response. It's refunded or reimbursed through the CARES Act and through our CRF and public assistance funding. We're actually working on all of those reimbursements now, but these are dollars that will be reimbursed back to the county, and it is a awesome platform that we have available to us. And you should definitely get a complete notebook, and if you'd like to even be a part of, you know, sitting with them and going over all their work, it's what emergency management has been utilizing for the past, like I said, since we were in our spike. Everything from helping us with COVID clinic to reimbursements.
It's a lot of money, though, Gabriel.
No, it's, it's a lot of money, and it's, it's an important use. That's what these funds, these CARES Act funds were, there's actually a grants administration appropriation within CARES Act, so you're right, we do not have the ability here in this county to do the work that we needed to do for COVID-19, and they have been a tremendous ally and asset for us.
Okay, I don't want, I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Just get copies of the reports.
You bet, you bet. All right, hearing, hearing that discussion, and Maggie, I know you're listening, could you please get those notebooks, because I had them sent to Rico for all of us for this meeting, and they need to be given to you. And I wouldn't even mind, Commissioner, put it back on the agenda next time, so you have a chance to really look at it, and, I mean, for information only, but give you a chance to ask more questions, and even have them come in.
Another question I have, Judge, is this data here, not the same, the Health Department don't have this data? The Health Department or Amistad, they work every day with this stuff, they don't have this data?
No, sir, and, no, and I'm not doing it justice by calling it data. What it is, is a, it's a group of people who are helping to charter all of our responses. For example, we have a platform that is for testing only, that's worth about $400,000 that we have because of them. We worked with Adobe, and, I mean, Adobe is in the national, international company, Adobe, in order to get this type of platform, so that we have available to us, that we're going to use all the way through vaccines. So it's, I think the word data is just a misnomer. These, this is your county's network to making all things possible, from opening a COVID clinic all the way to distributing vaccines. Everybody plays a role, and they are the managers that bring it all together. And it doesn't matter whether it's community, or justice, or really, almost every single division of our COVID response, they've touched. It's just, it's poorly worded, and that's why the notebook, I think, is so informative. And I think Maggie is probably working on it right now, because I just asked her if she could please have them delivered here. But it is a really important group that we work, they work hand-in-hand with Dante, with the net, with, I mean, when I went to the city to get our transfer allocation form, this was part of the reason, is that we needed to make sure that the city also is participating, and this is available to our city-county health department.
You know, they're paying the same thing, or they're paying into this?
Well, they are by having transferred the money to us. And also, the other thing that's really important is public messaging. The city is also paying into the public messaging, but how we build all of this effort is through this program management system. And I really do, I want us to have a, I would love for there to be some opportunity for them to really kind of showcase everything that we've done, almost in a town hall. Like anything, time is always our enemy. But Tyner, if you would check with the court and see, I'd like to just have one workshop just on everything they've done, because you, Judge, Commissioner, that has such an interest in public health, you would love to see, start to finish, everything that we've done. And they have helped seven different states organize their COVID-19 response. It was a state contract, so the nice thing about it is that it's vetted by the state of Texas. Everything from, like I said, I will be honest with you, and I know that Amanda Bowie has been working with IBA exclusively with reimbursements. They found a way to literally categorize every single reimbursement into the right box for TIDAM. That alone has been golden, but like I said, there's so many different boxes that they check. But I think that you would like to have some more eyes or awareness to it, and we have mentioned them multiple times before in court, but you've never had the opportunity to meet them or to, or to visit with them.
Well, I never knew the details, is why, I mean, the amounts or whatever, but, okay, let's answer my questions. That's good.
Okay, well, thank you. And all right, so do I have a motion to, on motion number, I mean, letter number E, to ratify the DIR contract? And again, this is a contract that already has been signed and been in implementation since July.
Judge, can you hear me?
Yeah, Brent?
Can I, am I heard in there or not?
No, Brent.
My question was, my question is just, it's an inordinate amount, I'm trying to figure out, like, how many hours this represents. I read the scope of work, but obviously, $250,000 a month is quite a bit. I'm just trying to figure out where there's, how much time they're spending on this, too.
Every single day, round the clock, literally. I mean, I personally meet with them three days a week, per I myself, and then members of our team and our department heads meet with them as well, as well as the Health Department. And so they are, they are round the clock. There is really no way I could begin in this court, but I'll try, in our COVID-19 response, when Kathy comes on, we will try to kind of go backwards again and fill you in, but when you see your notebooks, and I would ask, Kathy, could you do me a favor? Oh, never mind, they're on their way up from Rico. When you see your notebooks, you will understand by looking at the bi-weekly reports, the volume of work they've done in about eight different sectors. It all begins with testing and the software platform they were able to acquire for us called TDR, and it moves through different charters from public messaging to case management, analytics, my goodness, economic support, it just, it's, there's really about eight different categories that they have concentrated on, and we have been able to take each category and focus our response to whichever department it pertains to. And from that, the work begins, and then, you know, it channels into, like, for example, the Development Commission is now in charge of the Cross-Community Collaboration Council. But it begins with Accenture putting that charter together, formulating it, and then sending it off for implementation. So they see it through from the think tank all the way to the execution.
And Judge, you said this was, is 100% being reimbursed?
Yes.
Has it been reimbursed already? Have we received that money?
No, Brent, we haven't received hardly any money. We have been in the process of putting our reimbursements in through TIDAM, and there is a long story to that, but the short version is, is all of that's happening now. I literally signed, probably in the last seven days, about $750,000 worth of reimbursements. TIDAM has a unique way of asking for their reimbursements, and Dale had to almost create an entire new platform to do that. All of our reimbursements will be going in in the next 10 days. And in fact, all of them are due by November 30th, that's our internal deadline, and TIDAM's cutoff is December 15th. And this, these program managers are how we are getting from A to Z. This is exactly how they move it. So they help pay for themselves and pay for everything else that we are getting. And the name of the game here is not to lose any dollars that have been given to us, and that's also very, very important. So it's a, it's a fantastic setup, and unfortunately, because it flows from emergency management, you guys don't have as much eyes on it as I would like, but we can change that on a dime. They are ready to meet with each of you. Hey, guess what? We think we fixed your audio. No, never mind? What?
The Commissioner has something he's trying to say.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
No, it's okay, and my next question was just that, will this continue? I note that this goes through October 20 of 2020, or is this going to continue? And are we assured if it's going to continue that we will get reimbursed on anything that continues?
So, that's an awesome question, and here's the answer. It's supposed to stop in October. Here's the deal, I can better answer that question maybe for you all at the end of this week, and I absolutely will have a special meeting between now and then to address CARES Act. But we're about, we're, we're trying to anticipate what our needs are to see how much money we have left. So the answer is, if we have funds, the answer is yes, I would like to continue, but if we don't, we don't, right? And you saw the news that Congress is still at an impasse, so we thought by now we would get a supplemental COVID, thank you, a COVID bill. It looks like it'll have to happen in January after the election, or after November after the election. But most importantly is, we have enough money to cover what we've spent now, and we have enough money to get us through. enough money to get us through December 15th, okay? But I would love for them to continue because it is really important to get this vaccination management piece of it tied in to our software, our new testing platform that goes live on October 15th. And the goal is, if we have money, I'll certainly let you know. Right now, I don't know. I think we do, but I'm also trying to put some dollars, you know, you just never know what comes up. So like, what if the judiciary says, I need 2,000 more face masks, can you go buy them, right? So we're doing our best and we're hoping to have a, a special meeting just on CARES Act so we can go over everything that we've done and everything that, that we expect that we still lack. But on reimbursements, their contract will be reimbursed at 100%. And by the way, from three different sources because that's, that's how that cookie crumbled. Governor's Fund, CARES Act, and PA, Public Assistance. Does that help, Commissioner? We're still working on your audio.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
No, thank you. You now have before you a book that I created for you and I apologize that you didn't get it till right now. I created this based on not everything I've received, but I thought a highlight of everything that I work on every week. So you're looking at what I looked at every week and status reports and I guess what's missing are all the voluminous emails and videos and conversations, but at least this gets you a beginning. So like, if you'll turn, if you'll look at Chapter Two, that's a good place to start because it talks about test management and how we started with testing to get to the platform that we're launching for, for our future. And then it just continues. And by the way, we're also working with the hospital district as well. They're an integral piece of this, so it's not just Amistad or, or Health Department, anybody like Commissioner Gonzalez said, anybody that's a stakeholder gets brought into the fold on, on this group. So this is exactly an important piece of, of how we, of what we do and what they do. Okay. All right, I, I think for the clerk, I'm going to go, thank you, if you kill that, Nat, I'm so grateful, it's been flying here. For the clerk's position, I'm going to go back in time and I've got a motion. Not yet, okay. I'll, I need a motion to ratify.
Judge, has the, has the city participated in any of this with, with us?
You know, Carolyn, certainly at the beginning, they were much more, they were very, you know, brought in early on. And so I would say pieces. For example, public messaging, definitely, that charter, they definitely participated. On testing, Peter Collins certainly helped us a lot on that testing charter. So I guess to answer your question, it would be
No.
Some, not as much as the, the county definitely has, you know, carried the ball here on this, but, but there's no doubt that we involve city-county health department quite a bit.
Well, for me, because I think this is so important, this is like something we have never had before and we were not prepared for it, and I think this is important. To me, they should have helped us with this and, and split it. That's just my opinion, but it's not going to happen.
And I, and I just really want you to know, this is an awesome book. You know, we talk about how in the heck would we deal with this? We never want to deal with this, right? Again, ever, ever, ever. But what if, and we have to think like this in emergency management, what if we were to get a whole new strain and it would be the, the COVID, the novel 21? You know, we would not be in the novel COVID-19 virus, we would be a novel COVID-20 or 21 virus. This is our, this is our Bible now, this is our template, this is how we would tackle everything. So we now have our resiliency plan right here, built for us. And I just, I really want you to know that we all wish that children would come with playbooks and guidelines and I wish COVID-19 had one too, but it didn't. And so we did the best that we could and I am every day more and more grateful. You know, when you take a leap of faith to hire a group like this, you say, oh Lord, please make it work out great, because this is my leap of faith that I believe these, these are the right folks to come in and make a difference. And how satisfying it is for me to be able to show you this and go, it did. It did and it's still doing it. And you're right, I, I think the only negative here is that I wish that, I wish we were all in one building.
Yeah.
Metaphorically and physically.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, and I'll second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, same sign.
Nay.
I've got a nay from Gonzalez. Chesney, I'll let you record.
I'm just going to abstain, Judge.
Thank you, appreciate that. I know how you feel about ratifications and I respect you for that.
Thank you.
I do.
Can we go back to item number B? I've got the information for you.
Yes, let's do it. Tell us what happened on item number B.
Item number B, we are a fiscal agent for several entities within the county, our adult probation, our juvenile probation, we also have Durange District Number Three as well as some other ones where, where we're the fiscal agent, where we do cutting, cut checks. This $4 check for web-based design was for Durange District Number Three. So it's not accounting expenses, their expense, they, their, the funds come from their, their sources of funds, however, we are responsible for issuing the checks. So that's where this comes from and it's designed for, for their, for their site only.
That's a great answer, thank you.
Who's Durange District Three?
They're out in Bishop.
I don't think they exist anymore.
Yeah, they do.
They do?
Yeah.
Who's, who's in charge of that? But we tried to find some, but we never could.
It's, uh, that went to 44, 49, 44 Shadow Bend Drive in Corpus Christi, Texas, it was initial by J O, Advisor Jerry Ford, I believe, but this was approved on September 22nd.
Can you, can you give me that information?
We'll get you as much as we can, yes.
So we'll get you that information.
They're, they're actually elected, are they not?
It should be, but, I mean, believe me, my wife.
Yeah, they conduct elections and
And they are very small businesses, that's why we are the fiscal agents for them.
They're not doing anything either, they're not doing nothing, so.
Well, the good news is, is for the, you can find that piece out, but for the fiscal piece of it, which was the authorization of the bill, it seems like we are all good. So for the clerk, can we go ahead and get a motion?
Yeah.
To pay?
So moved.
And that's, I'll second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. And clerk, that was number, letter B.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, an aye from Chesney. That's a B and an E. And then we have letter O and that's the executed lease agreements from the hangars, I'm sorry, from the airport. And John's here in case we have any questions, but who pulled O?
I did.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Are we ready for it?
John's here, he's going to approach. Good morning, John. Commissioner?
I've, I've asked this before, did we ever, I know you get tired of me asking you, but I'm, I'm just going to keep hounding you.
That's fine.
Because I look at the prices, they're 180 most of them, then 250. Do we have electricity in those hangars?
Yes, ma'am.
So does it even pay the electricity bill for what we're charging? I just think it's such a small amount. Did, we, we talked about looking at other counties.
Yes, ma'am, and I did that.
And is that what they're charging?
Yes, ma'am, I did, I went through $40 a mile radius of all the airports and at the time before we raised the hangar rates, we were about in the middle.
Yeah.
Okay. And then after gathering everybody else, now we're at the upper end of the middle. We, like Rockport and Aransas Pass, or Ingleside, should I say, they provide more services than we do, so their hangar rate's a little higher than ours. And then like Bishop, let's see, Bishop, Centon and whatnot, their, their hangars aren't in as good a shape as ours, so we're higher than them.
Yeah.
So we're, we're the upper end of the middle.
Do you have a mall filled?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, a waiting list?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have about 50 people on the waiting list, but out of that 50, you could probably count on 20, 25 of them actually needing the hangar.
And does it pay the electricity bills? We're not going in the hole, are we? What are the electricity bills?
I wouldn't think so because the lights are hardly ever used.
Yeah, can you just find out? I'm just curious what your electricity bill is.
Okay, I'll do my best.
But thank you. Motion to approve, Judge.
And I'll go ahead and second.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a second from Gonzalez instead. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, thank you. And that's an aye from Chesney. And then we have double A and, and double L left. And Commissioner Gonzalez, you pulled both of those. One was Robert Duran and, and this is through the end of the year. You'll recall that the hospital district paid through October and this is to get us to the end of the year and this is a reimbursable expense through the CARES Act.
But it's coming to, to the CARES Act? Why, why is that?
Why is that? Because it's related to our COVID-19 response. Everything we do.
So we can pay for salaries if we're related to?
You can pay for consultants and contracts, yes. It's just, it's through December. Okay, will you make?
Make a motion.
Make the motion, okay. And then second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, I've got two nays. All right, and then we've got number LL and this is the Amistad. And again, this is a ratification that actually has a two-step process, Commissioner. We're going to ratify the agreement and then it's actually going to be submitted for payment for the city, for the city-county health department. So this actually gets signed by Annette Rodriguez and gets paid for with those funds, but we're going to be a part of the ratification of it since we're both city-county health.
So the invoices are being paid by the Health Department?
That's correct.
And we give them money or they give them money?
So that's also, there's, there's multiple sources of funding. It's, it's, we first looked at CARES Act, then we also looked to the CDC funds and then finally we looked to the 1115 waiver program. All three are eligible, but you know, the city will help sort that out first. I mean, in other words, they, they will figure out if they want to put a third, a third, a third, or half, a half, half and half.
Hopefully.
But the CDC funds that were given to the Health Department from Dishes is, is an excellent source here for funding.
Okay. So moved.
Okay, and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And thanks to Annette for all her work on this. This was, it's always a lot of work when, when we send these contracts over that are bilateral, so thank you to the Health Department. That concludes our consent agenda at this time. Am I correct? Did we pull everything else? Clerk, we are done with the consent agenda. And now I'm going to advance an item because I really want to make sure that we can address it timely.
I'm sorry, but I have one more question.
Yes.
There's a, a sudden invoice of $48,805.
Yes.
For August.
15, uh-huh.
Yeah.
That's going to the Health Department.
So we tell them, do we have the time to pay it or they should just pay it?
Yeah, now we'll be good. This ratification, once Annette signs, I think Teresa and I have figured it out finally. Teresa, would you take the podium? These, these invoices came to us because we set up the COVID clinic, okay? But we figured out a way now that they're going to go straight to the Health Department, is that?
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah. And it came to us first just because
That's, that's, I just want, don't be lost in this shuffle.
Yeah, no, I know it. We, we corrected that, but it was hard to blame them. It's a compliment in the, in the highest regard that everyone thinks that they should send all the bills here because we're, we've done such a good job setting everything up, but no, we're sending it off to the right spot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. I'm going to advance E1. I always like to accommodate all electeds and so Kevin, thanks for being patient and we called you over at the beginning of the consent, but sometimes it takes us a little longer. And welcome, you are here to discuss an important item regarding position changes. And I always say, Kevin, let's start with the good part. This is a net neutral to the county.
Yes, it is.
I always like starting there.
[laughing]
And, but it's actually your position that in the future it actually will help the county in savings, but, but at least we can start off with the premise that for this fiscal year, it's at least net neutral.
That's correct.
And take us through it, Kevin.
What, what we're trying to do is, going back to May, we had, I used to have two administrative assistants and, and we had one retire. And, and once one of them was going to retire, I was always wanting to reallocate these positions and put them really where we needed them most. And, and so we're, this plan pulls that together and it, and it really brings the pay levels up for a couple of my employees who are really managers of the Motor Vehicle Department and also a couple of other positions and up in property tax. And it also kind of levels the playing field on, on the pay scale to compensate them based on the amount of job duties that they have to perform on, and then on a regular basis. And so what we did was, we're going to take and downgrade the administrative assistant to a frontline, to a frontline employee and then we're going to take the, the overage from that and along with eliminating one of our part times that, that has vacated their position and then reallocate these funds within, within the, we put a decent separation in salary based on the level of, of expertise required to perform these functions.
And, and Kevin, I want to address something that often comes up and I always think it's best to be honest about it. You and I talked about this actually some time ago, that this was a need, this was an important modernization and organizational efficiency, but people are going to wonder why this didn't come up during the budget and there's, I guess, a good reason for that and I'd like for you to tell the court because typically we do like to do this at a certain time, but you believed that there was a strong compelling reason to wait.
There is, there is numerous compelling reasons to wait on this and, and one of them was COVID. We weren't operating at full capacity, so we didn't need to immediately fill those positions. So I didn't see any need to go out and, and pay somebody to do a job that we didn't necessarily need at the time. We're back open now, we need to start moving forward and we anticipate being open and especially when the governor removes his, the moratorium on enforcement and registration stickers, that place is going to become a zoo downstairs. And then number two, I didn't know if COVID was going to force us to have any staffing reductions or not. And so we wanted to hold those back in case we did have to have a staffing reduction and we could go from there. And so that's the reason why we held off and, and just kind of held these positions tight until we kind of figured out where this COVID thing was going to go and, and, and what was going to be needed as far as budgetary issues and so forth.
Thank you. Commissioners, I know Kevin is here to help answer any questions. Dale, feel free to pipe in. Like I said, normally, you know, we kind of know exactly where we are in budget season. This year, we really didn't. We went down to the wire and so I can understand how this came about, but I always ask one question. Is it efficient?
It is efficient.
Does it save money?
It does, it does save money. As a matter of fact, to date, because of the things that we've done, we've saved over $24,864.
And then of course, one of the things that it also addresses that I think is important to all of us is that by doing this, we're really creating an organizational structure that Kevin can use to create what I would call the proper separation, right? So that a supervisor has this particular classification and then someone underneath him has
Correct.
That it creates the right organizational structure.
Exactly, because right now we actually have front, we have clerical employees because of the reallocation of salaries that are making more than my supervisors are.
Yeah. And this corrects that.
This corrects that.
And that was maybe one of the things that Commissioner Gonzalez had looked at at some point. Again, normally commissioners, we do this at a different time, but there was a compelling reason. We did not know what was going to be the orders for DMV and so that's why you see it before you and I'd ask for questions at this time.
Kevin, how many supervisors do you have?
I have the three in motor vehicle and I have two in property tax.
Okay, and how many people are they, are under them?
Well, in motor vehicle, about 24.
Okay. Each person or just the two?
No, 24 total. So you're talking about, they don't supervise a specific person, they supervise areas of specialty and, and I kind of have a long list of their functions and they also overlap. But they do everything from have to go over divorce decrees to other legal documents and if you spend any time down there, they're, the, the, they really have to know the, the text department motor vehicles title and registration manuals, they're two separate ones inside out and, and they're about 500 pages pop.
Okay.
It's, they're, but I mean, let me just kind of give you some of the highlights. They, they schedule, they handle maintenance problems with the equipment, they consult the TX DMV help desk, they deal with correspondence on title rejections, they assist deputies with customers, they diffuse a lot of, of customer complaints, especially when people, and we get what I call mad on arrivals because people don't understand the process and it's understandable, they only do this once every understandable, they only do this once every two to four years, and when they're missing a document and have to come back, it's very, very irritating, and we get that, and so, they have to diffuse that quite often. We have HEB, which is our subcontractors, we deal with car dealers and title requirements, we handle conflicts between deputies, unfortunately. We reassign people as they need to, based on, on, based on workflow, placing orders, tax collector hearings. We have hearings when we have to decline a, a title application that has to go through a hearing process, and they, they handle and coordinate those sort of things. They monitor the performance, we have our online web dealer process that we also go through and review. One thing a lot of people don't know is that the tax assessor collector is personally liable for every dollar that comes through our office, and they really, really help us just go through and maintain the voids, because when we get audited by the state comptroller, they can go back five years, and if we're missing any documentation on, on a void, they come, come after me personally as if that was a tax that should be, should be collected, and they help us tremendously with that. They, and then, training. You know, it, the training process is ongoing, because the title process, it's, I always tell people, the tax department motor vehicles' title and registration manuals, like an etch a sketch. Every, every time the legislature goes into session, you shake it up, and, and new rules and regulations come out, and they also come out in interim as these things go through. One year, we had 70 title, title and registration bullets, and it's just in updates and rule changes that took place. And so, they have to stay on top of that, we have to monitor, you know, they are doing a lot, a tremendous amount of management, because it's not, this is a far-from-clerical job that they're, that they are performing, and, and we want to make sure they're compensated appropriately.
Go ahead.
I really, we talk about this all the time, every time, that, you know, we don't want to do these things after budget time, you know, and, and I know there's some, sometimes you have to, I guess, and, and, and again, we blame it on the pandemic, you know, and, but you're still early in the, in the game, you know, we're just starting with their, with their, with their budget, but, and we're not, and what I see here, really, you're not asking for any more money, maybe?
Not asking for any more money. In fact, we've, even as we do it right now, even with the reallocation, because we haven't even filled the position, it's going to be a, we're going to save the county $1,500 over this next fiscal year, within that budget, so.
But you're not, but you're not going to come back six months later and say, oh, we're going to need to change these other two more? Now, that's what I don't want, for you to come back, you know, three, four, five months later, and say, we're going to have to change two more.
This has been, this has been a plan of mine for two years.
I move.
Yeah. Thank you.
Motion and a second. And, and I can confirm that it's been in the works for two years, because he's been telling me about it. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? That was an aye from Chesney. I'm now looking, I'm now reading his lips there. Okay.
I appreciate your support, and I can assure you, my employees really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin, and keep us posted. Tell us how, you know, how things are going downstairs. We know that you're right about, I see the activity already on the uptick. When you get your queuing system, will you be sure and let us know? We'd love for a, to see a demonstration.
We absolutely will. It's, it's, I think we're about, I think last time we checked, we're probably still about four to six weeks out before we get.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
But, the good thing is, you know, if we wind up with this pandemic thing again, and we have to shut things down, we will still be able to keep in-person transactions because of the queuing system, because we'll be able to schedule them remotely, so.
We're super excited about it, and I'm sorry I bombarded you. Every time I see something cool that comes across my email that's technology-based for payments, I think the next place we're headed is payments. You know, queuing syst, not queuing system, but kiosks for payments.
I think that would be wonderful, especially given the, the conditions that we're in now, so.
And, and just so you know, if we talk about any extra dollars, that's one of the things we're looking for, but, so I appreciate your willingness to look at everything for us.
Absolutely, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for that, for letting me take that out of order and accommodating our elected. Number 3A1, oh, wait, I'm sorry, the COVID responses. Where's Kathy? We, we actually skipped all our COVID reports, and Kathy's got a Hurricane Hannah and a COVID report to go through, and I'll let her do that right now. And, and it's funny, but if you really look at it, guys, number one, number two, and number three are all CARES Act-related, and, and so, and then four is Hannah. So, Kathy's going to set the stage that we can move through one through four regular agenda items very quickly, I think. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Judge Canales and Commissioners. Nuasis County COVID numbers continue an overall downward trending. We're looking at 20,727 cases, 20 new cases, and a total number of deaths as 421, two new deaths as of yesterday. Nuasis County daily burn rate for COVID is $2,968,146.67. And total burn rate for the entire Nuasis County is $10,712,457.65. The city of Corpus Christi is at 6.9 million. We are recommending that our county get their, our community get their flu shots during the early fall of 2020 to help combat influenza and COVID-19, as well as the, what we are now seeing is an influenza and COVID combination that is being more frequently diagnosed. Nuasis Office of Emergency Management Section Chief Briefings will occur one day a week. On Monday at 10:00 a.m., additional meetings and individual contact on any COVID questions will be addressed as the issues arise. Continue to work with Edward and Julie Guerra with COVID testing and flu shots for Nuasis County, and employees and family members were completed as of this past week. I believe they did approximately 617 flu vaccinations. Hurricane Hannah, emergency management will submit, did submit the Nuasis County disaster summary outline for Hurricane Hannah to Tidham and FEMA. The unincorporated Nuasis County portion was 19.6 million, and a total of 35.5 million for Nuasis County in its entirety. The rest of those were made up by the city of Corpus Christi, the port of Corpus Christi, and the city of Robstown. We did assist the city of Robstown in filing for $106,000. We're still working on a few itemized statements for them, they're going to submit those, but we got most of that submitted for them. You can, based on, just so that you have a little knowledge base on this, we can continue to add claims to our DSO over time, once we make our original submission. If we find other claims, we can add to this, so we're not at a total cutoff. And due to the changes based on COVID, FEMA and Tidham are not doing onsite assessments after the fact. We're having to provide them with all the assessment information upfront when we submit the disaster summary outline. The total burn rate for Hurricane Hannah is $16,666,163.63 as of yesterday. I would like to bring to your attention that generators and backup generators, there's a great need in our county government, as this decreases our losses, increases our speed of recovery, and decreases the loss of life whenever we have disastrous events. There are many avenues for reimbursement if the Commissioners Court chooses to move forward to update our generation, generator system and backup generators. We think about the greater need like this year, when we've had a long hurricane season, and a category four hurricane is preparing to enter the Gulf for the Delta, Hurricane Delta. Lee County, Florida, I did a little research, and Lee County, Florida received 4.8 million in federal funds for backup generators in 13 different sites in their counties. So, this is not out of our reach. Hurricane Delta, just to provide you an update on that, it is a fast-moving system, it's been going at in between 15 and 17 miles per hour. It's ranged from a category two, up to a three, up to a four. They do anticipate that the Caribbean, it will intensify once it crosses the Yucatan Peninsula and start to accelerate, but they do believe, based on the weather, before it impedes onto the coast of Louisiana, that it, we hope that it goes down to a three at that point. The coastal bin region will have some beach issues, coastal flooding, heightened wave action in marine areas, and increased rip currents. So, Nuasis County Emergency Management is continuing to monitor the weather, and we do not anticipate any action unless the track line shifts more significantly westward.
Yes, thank you, Kathy. I appreciate your updates on Delta and in general. I bet everyone's going to want to know, including Commissioner Chesney, what about the beach? Yesterday evening, I only by text, but spoke to Port Oransas, and they already have issued a disaster declaration, and, and we probably will as well, because these things always happen on the weekends, for whatever reason, and it's nice to be able to, be able to react immediately with orders. Again, why do we do these disaster declarations? Because they give us the flexibility to bring resources in. We don't expect this storm to even really wink at us, but it's going to have an effect on the rip, again, Commissioner Chesney out there, and it's also going to have effect on our roads. And, but I loved the order that, that we were able to perfect. I said, evolution is a beautiful thing. Our order basically allows for us to, if needed, to, you know, make certain that access roads are, you know, that, that we don't allow people to drive on the beach when there's no beach, when, when the flooding has gone to the dunes, but the minute it subsides, the order dissipates. So, I'm not certain that we need to do that, but by putting us under the disaster declaration, if and when I needed to do it, I could get that accomplished quickly. So, just wanted to keep you guys informed, we'll give you another update, you know, tomorrow. This is not the weekend, I repeat, not the weekend to go to Cancun or Playa del Carmen. They are going to have severe category three type of event, so very, very, quite frankly, tragic what's happened to the Gulf of Mexico. I think we've had nine storms enter, is that right, Kathy?
Yes, ma'am, approximately nine.
Approximately nine storms enter. If you don't think that emergency management is the most important, you know, 2020 department, you know, only second to, I guess, the rest of us are co-equals, but we really do rely on you to keep us safe, and so, I really do appreciate all the hard work. Your report underscores heavily the importance of all the different items that you are tackling from Hannah to COVID, but it doesn't do you justice as to the man-hours that you have put in, and your team has put in, and the write-out team has put in, in order to, to make all of this work. Like I said, if we were just dealing with Hannah, we would be swamped. The fact that we're dealing with Hannah and COVID and reimbursements and deadlines is really just a tribute to your work ethic, so really do appreciate it. Are there any questions for Kathy at this time?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. Information only, this helps us set the tone for items 3A1, and two and three are very similar, and I'll just set the stage by saying they are interlocal agreements with different independent school districts. The first is Robstown to designate a portion of the county CARES Act funding for technology, equipment, and services. Basically, TEA allows these independent school districts to receive a match if their county or their city will help provide for technology, and so, we have done that for Robstown ISD. We are going to provide half of their need, and the other half will come from the state. And the way we're paying for this is through our CARES Act allocation. So, it's very important to make sure that, that, that kids have the ability through virtual technology to, to go to school these days, and we all found ourselves in the coastal bin with very few devices in the hands of children. So, this is our effort. Does anybody have the dollar amount that they want to rattle off to me here?
We're upsounding $188,154.
Um, but, um.
For eligible purchases.
Dale, I thought that number was divided by two. I thought, I thought the.
That's within the interlocal agreement that I saw here on.
Okay, I, I feel, can we, I feel like that number is a, is a, is the whole amount, and we're paying for half of it.
County agrees that a portion of its CARES Act up to $188,154 will be provided to the, to the district. The county will provide up to $188,154. That's what the agreement says.
Teresa, I know you're listening. I'm skipping, I'm skipping Robstown right now. I think that number is, that's to the whole. Let's do number two. I'm going to, I'm going to check my notes. I know that's the right number, Dale, but I think that's the right number for, for the entire purchase, and Laura, can you, does that agreement give us the opportunity? We can pay half and then, or do you want that right number up there?
We need the number. That was the number that was provided.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion to approve this, subject to the number being verified, because I think that's the whole number for, for their entire purchase, and that, and that our portion was, was half of it.
I think we should wait to.
Well, it's, I mean, I know we have it.
Because you need to know what you're approving, how much.
Okay, well, hold on, I mean, let's skip it, because I know we have it.
Judge, I got a message from Maria, and, you know, we're having audio trouble.
Right.
But she is saying that a corrected interlocal was, was routed, so you may be correct, and let me track that down.
I'd like to think so. There is a couple of things I'm going to, you know, numbers are, let's just see what we can do. Let's skip one and go to two. It's the same concept, but this time with Port Oransas. Can somebody tell us the number on that one?
That one's, I'll, again, on the agreement, it says $20,892.
That's correct. Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post same sign? Okay. Brent, you're an aye. Yes?
Yes.
Let me have him on my screen. Do we don't even have him on my screen?
Connie, can you do?
That way I can at least look and see, and give me the thumbs up. Who's monitoring, Commissioner Chesney? Are you?
What happened to the output?
Did we lose him?
He's on my screen.
Uh, here is the correct Robstown amount, it's $94,077. Nine-four-zero-seven-seven. That is definitely correct. So, for those of my fiscal compadres, I just saved us $94,000. I'll take the thank you and a cookie later. Okay, we got to be, got to be with it. That's a big difference. Okay. All right. I'm slowing down so we can make sure Chesney, I know he's going to, would want to have voted on, on Port Oransas and on this Robstown.
I'm sure she does, he does.
We've lost more than we already.
Yeah, we're going to have to break. Tyner, Brent is, is asking for a reboot, and I don't blame him, I mean, he needs to be a part of it.
I apologize to the court, but we're having.
Yeah, look, let's reboot everything, and I have an idea.
Everybody on the meeting.
Laura, why don't we go to executive session and make the most of our time?
We're having audio trouble.
Oh, no, because we have to be in here, never mind.
We're going to take a break.
Okay, well.
And everybody, rejoin the meeting, please.
Um, I'm going to get you an answer for that. We have everybody. I don't know why these three are on, and just give me a second, I'm going to get you an answer to that. Look, let's take a quick break, it's 10:53. Let's take a 10-minute break, gives us a chance to reboot the system. Tyner, if you need more time, let me come back on the record and give us another, some more time for the audience to know.
Thank you.
You bet. Mikes, need to be taken off? Okay, we're coming back on the record, and the time is 11:35 a.m. And we were in the middle of discussing regular agenda items that had to do with Port Oransas, and we actually passed it, and Brent, what we said, that's when we realized, oh, my gosh, we've lost Brent. So, Brent, we just wanted to hear for the record that item number 3A2 that you were in favor of, it was the Port Oransas Independent School District in the amount of $20,9892.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Please record.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Please record my vote as an aye. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent. And you heard about how it's a match, so that when we get to participate, TEA will give them the other half.
Thank you.
And I just, I just want to say that the way we came about all of this is that our office initiated, my office initiated, and Maggie took the lead on this. And she's been working with every single small town and city inside our jurisdiction that was not the urban center of Corpus. The city of Corpus Christi handled the Corpus Christi schools, and Maggie, on, on my, on my behalf, handled everybody else. And so this is how we come to pass here. And so now we've got the Robstown independent, and we made a correction, and the correct amount is $94,077. And, and so, we would like a motion. I think we actually might have did it, did that one. No, we didn't. Okay. I'll need a motion for that one. That's three A one. And a second?
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post same sign. Now, let's go to Banquete. And Banquete's amount is, is also correct. It's $44,562.50. And this is also being paid for by our County Care Act funding. And again, it's also for technology equipment, and I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And all of these require an interlocal, and so thank you to the county attorney's office, because every time we do something like this, there's an agreement that's attached. It's not like we just say we're gonna send you the money. And that's why it's so important to bring it to court. So, thank you. That's one, two, and three.
How much was Banquete?
Banquete was, can you repeat it? I had it written down. $44,000?
$562.50.
$562.50.
Five, six, two, okay.
Okay. And, and we've also assisted, we have assisted some of the, some of the smaller areas with, with hotspots and with internet services. So, if you see a jurisdiction that's missing, it's either come to court already in the form of hotspots. I think we've done those already, hotspots and internet, or, or it's about to come to court. So, these interlocals, again, need to be drawn up before you'll see it on our agenda. But we are working with every jurisdiction. And we actually are even working with our charter schools that fall under TEA as well. So, I just got a request from a charter school for $3,000 yesterday. So you might see that one come up. So now, moving on to number four, this is, discuss and consider adopting an order granting an exemption under the Texas Local Government Code. I'm sorry, I read that wrong. Adopting an order granting, yes, granting exemption under the Texas Local Government Code. Discuss and consider selection of advanced construction management for professional consulting services related to Horace Caldwell Pier, and consider approval agreement of advanced construction management providing consultation, including procurement, phase services, pre-construction phase services, construction phase services, and post-construction warranty phase services relating to Noises County Horace Caldwell Pier. And this, I will let, I did not put this one on. I know Tyner's got some information. The only thing I want to say is that sometimes we use verbiage that gets misconstrued. Only the engineer of record is going to be providing those construction phase services. So, Hanson is the engineer of record for the Horace Caldwell Observation Deck. And you named it as the pier expansion project, but you meant the Observation Deck?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so we need to make sure. And it's really not a pier expansion project at all. It's an Observation Deck that stands alone. I, I don't know if we want to correct that verbiage.
I don't know why it can't be heard right now.
But Scott Cross is coming in?
Yeah, Scott.
Y'all, y'all can hear me, can't you?
Mm-hmm.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, yeah. This, this is about Scott Muir's construction project management, right?
That's correct.
Yes. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, that's, I know I put that on last time. I guess it got put, put to this one. But Scott's essentially gonna do quality control, quality assurance kind of stuff for us, just like he did at the IB McGee RV Park Recovery. And it worked well, you know, because he could be there on a daily basis, keeping check on anything. But like you said, Judge, he's not gonna do anything when it comes to design specs or anything like that, you know? If he saw something, he would consult with the engineer on our behalf and then communicate with us.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And I just, I just want to, yeah, and like I said, it's just semantics. I just wanted to make sure that when we get to the contract, that we, you know, we're, we're accurate about the scope. We, I think we all understand what construction management does.
Is it added fee?
Uh, this is an added fee. How much is this fee?
Judge, it's $54,475 for the duration. It's in the agenda, and it also shows exactly what he will be performing or what duties he'll be performing. And those fees will be coming out of my CO funds.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other questions here? You might be wondering why it got tabled and why it's on this time. It's because when we get to purchasing, you'll see that we do have an RFP to award construction for the court to consider. And so, that is why this is ripe now.
Judge, one thing. Tyner, if you could have Teresa make sure I know what that department code is, so that when I get some medals for payment, I know exactly where to code it to, because I don't have access to the Commissioner's CO fund department codes.
We'll make sure you get the right information.
Yeah, just get with me and Scott later, and we'll get it worked out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Motion, motion, motion to pass, excuse me.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, same sign. Okay. All right. And now we've got number five, is a supplemental agreement for additional services to include construction phase services. These are engineering services with LAN for the IB multipurpose office building. And this, this was also on last agenda, and we were able to make some modifications for cost savings. And so you now have a new proposal. And I would take a, a motion at this time. This is for both design services of ADA, limited design services of ADA parking lot, and also the construction phase services for the ability to remodel the IB purpose, IB McGee multipurpose office building. And Commissioner, you're satisfied with the, with the renegotiation?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I had it on mute.
You're satisfied with the renegotiation?
I'm sorry, yes. That, that has been submitted for the additional fee on that for $52,000. And I would move approval on that, Judge.
I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. And then, there is a item number six regarding Scott Cross can help us here, the IB McGee Stormwater Retention Pond. Is this the one you wanted to table?
Yes, Judge, this is the one Scott asked to table. I would move, make a motion to table this, based on Scott Cross's recommendation.
Right. And we'll be back on this next week, next court, October 20th. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. I just, I've got to get a, Belinda prefers us to do a supplement to their Phase One that they're already awarded versus another contract for Phase Two. So I gotta get that fixed before I bring it back to you.
Understood. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Post same sign. Thank you.
Aye for, I'm in, I'm in favor. I'm sorry, Judge, I'm keep muting.
That's okay. We're now gonna move to number seven, and this is discuss and consider an interlocal with CSCD effective October 1 for the purposes of risk assessment in the Noises County Jail.
This is an ongoing program, Judge.
Yeah.
And it is budgeted. This greatly reduces the jail population for us. It's worth it. It pays for two officers in CSCD to risk assess, and essentially to recommend getting people out of jail if they're not a violence concern or a flight risk or anything like that. So, we recommend approval.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Gonzalez and a second from Commissioner Vaughn. And all those in favor, continuing this worthy program signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I would wholeheartedly agree with that. We now have item number eight, and that's approve the financials for the month of August. And that would be, Dale.
Thank you, Honor. Go over this a few, quickly as I can. We go through this, the process of the book. On page four and five shows you our fund balances for all of our funds. The general fund, fund balance as of August is $35,558,000. As we, we know this is still the remaining portion of September to go through there. So, we expect this to be where we, we planned for our budget cycle to be. So that's not really surprising where we, we're at in that particular point. The one that we really want to bring your attention to is on page 10. Page 10 is where we have our, our self-insurance funds. And the one that's, that's always concerning is the one for group health. Group health is, is right now at, at, at the end of August, there's $405,000 left in fund balance. We've gone down from close to $900,000 with the beginning of the year, now to $405,000. We've had a lot of large claims in the last few months. We're working with Tomas and Boone Chapman to, to see where we're at. A quick projection of what we've seen so far, we may end this year with very little fund balance, if any, at the, at the point. I'm still working on the transactions and the, and the balance to go through there. Should I need to bring something to you, I will. Hopefully, I do not have to. But this is definitely a, a matter we need to keep, keep a very close watch on, because if there's a little fund balance at the end of this year, going into next year, will be very, very challenging for where we have on the, on those balances. As we said, there, we're half, we only got one month left, so we only, we're, we're 16% of the fiscal year remaining. There are a few departments that are showing a few below budget numbers. I won't go through those individually. You can look through the book to, to find where they are. The one item I want to bring your attention to, let me get to that page number. It's on page number 61. Page number 61 tells you, tells you our, our total general fund, fund balance, and what's remaining of the budget for the, for the general fund. And right now, we have 21.8% of our budget remaining. As I said, we're 16% of the year left. So, that's, we're still on a, on a good side of this. And so hopefully, when we do our fiscal year end, and we know September's a, a large month for trying to clear out some balances. So, so we still hope those are numbers that we need to keep an eye on. But we're still a good percentage-wise, a little bit, little bit less than we have been in the past, but we're, we're about where we expected to be. A good item, and I will be talking about this later on, another agenda item, but on some of our certificate obligations on page 80. On page 80 shows you, the very bottom of the report shows you our different certificate obligations that we have, funds available for. We have show you 2004, 2007, our 2015s, 2016, 17, and 19. And you see where our, our balances are for that. As we've said in the past, we need, and we've done a very good, good job of, of trying to spend down the 2004 COs. We only have 111,812 remaining. Same thing for the 2007 COs, the 438,000. But when we get to our 15 and 16, that balance, we have 5.5.3 million and 12.6 million. And we know, we are spending quite a bit out of our 2019 tax funds, but we need to try to spend those other funds down as well. So, let's just keep an eye on, on those balances and, and try to get those spent as quickly as possible. We know we've been having, pardon me, we, we know we've been doing a, a significant amount of purchases through our, our P cards for, for the year on page 84. Page 84 shows you that we, we have spent this month 361,562. This has gone down a little bit since we've gone through COVID-19, Hurricane Hannah, Tropical Storm Beta, and all the other ones we've gone through. And then, we haven't really overspent, but we have seen some, some significant costs. And the very last page of the report is on page 173. Show you for our P card transactions for the entire 11 months of this year, we spent 4.3 million dollars of transactions. That's the fiscal report for the month ending of August 31st. I'd like to direct you, have you seen, we've now changed the book style? In working with Jason, we were able to purchase a new piece of equipment to be able to bind the books. We, we've changed the picture on front, so hopefully, we can start making this a more usable documentation for you, and as well as something we can give out to there. But for, for this particular period, I submit August 31st, 2020, financial report for your acceptance.
Thank you, Dale. Are there any questions before we have a motion to approve? I just want to point out that, I mean, obviously, we are cautiously optimistic that we can finish the year in the black and not the red with regards to our self-insurance fund. But I do want to point out that in a year of COVID-19, that literally started, you know, in March, very early into our fiscal year, I consider it a great feat to be above water and not below. However, it did and will replenish all of our reserves. And because of that, I need the court to have awareness to the fact that next year, we were going to have to completely replenish to the tune of several million dollars. And I just want you guys, maybe not now, Dale, but maybe next time, you know, to have some sort, give you a chance to think about a funding strategy and how we will come, you know, how we will create that ability. But we had employees pass away. We had employees hospitalized. We had a tremendous amount of just additional claims this year, both from the pediatric division and the adult division. And again, I can't remember how many employees passed away from the city, but I think it was over four, five. I mean, so we, I just want you to know, when you're, when you're in the health insurance business, and we are, we are self-funded, COVID-19 is not your friend. It's, works against you hard. And we, at the end of August, are 400,000, you know, plus. But I do believe, as Dale does too, because we, we have the inside baseball on September already, that it will go down to the wire. And so we are doing everything we can to keep you abreast of the information. And it's just, I think it's important now to tell you that we are going to be out of funds on our reserves, and we need a strategy. And Dale, I'm gonna ask you to, you know, start thinking about it, and whenever it's appropriate. If it's, if it's next meeting, great. If you need another meeting, that's fine, too.
I need to see how the, the ending balances work for September. It's always been the policy of, of us, as well as Boone Chapman, as well as those we work with, to, to try to get us the claims that we can to for September, the 30th is possible, so they qualify for stop loss, if that's the case, to get reimbursements for. So, so September usually might be a greater month for expenses. Now, we need to look into our history. If, if for a couple of years, we didn't have a large, because this year, like you said, with, with COVID-19, we've had several large claims against our, some of our policies. In the two years that we didn't have any very large claims, we were able to bring the fund balance up significantly. So, we just need to see how the, the health works. And this year was significantly hard now, now that when the governor did suspend elective surgeries, that did reduce some of our costs, because some people that, that may have needed surgery weren't able to get it at that time. But that, that may come now that they'll, they'll, they'll start qualifying for it again. So, we just need to keep an eye on it. And as we've done in the past, this may mean a, a adjustment to all of our partners that, that participate in our health insurance, be, be us, Hospital District, whoever else participates in there, that may see a, a request for additional funds. So, and we'll, we'll make sure we, we allocate that based on the same way we do our current balances. The general fund, of course, will be a significant partner in, in paying for, for that. But we're gonna also charge the rest of the funds, as well as those that we, we use for outside the county.
Thank you, Dale. I just, like I said, it's, it's not good news, but I mean, we just need to accept it as, as the fate of the 2020 year and, and, you know, move on. Our premiums will, of course, help us, you know, go a long way to restoring our, our new balance. But anyway, I just, let's keep it, let's keep it as an agenda, a thought for you to bring it back next time.
Yes, yes.
Or the next, whenever the reconciliation occurs.
Yes.
Okay, so that's our approval of the, I'm sorry, that's the monthly financials. And does anyone have any questions, further questions? If not, I'd like a motion to approve. If not, I'd like a motion to approve. Okay, I'll move to approve the financial report.
Thank you.
And second. And, oh, last question. How are we doing above budget, though? We were doing 11%.
We were, if the fiscal year remaining is 16%, we're at 21%. So we're only seven.
Seven, okay. We're still doing good. We're doing good, but not as good as I would have liked.
Well, we knew that would.
We knew that was going to happen.
Always big months for expenses, people trying to use up their budget, so.
Right, right. But you think we'll end up?
I still believe we should end up close to where we estimated our balances to be, close to the 91, 90% total of expenses.
Excellent.
So I think we should be still in a good spot.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get another report from you next time.
Yes.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Okay, and now let's discuss and consider, here's, here to set the court record preservation fee. It's required by Texas Government Code 51.078 to be collected by the district clerk.
Yes, ma'am. So this is not to be confused with one of the other fees that we have this court approve, which is an archive fee. This is a preservation fee, and the money collected with this fee will go to the preservation of records, kind of like the work we do for CO File or with CO File. It can be anywhere from $1 to $10. The auditors, I think, recommended that it be set at the maximum of $10, and it would generate $85,000 to $100,000 annually. It is a required fee, unlike the archive fee, which was an optional fee that we decided to add on to assist in paying for part of our records management department. This one is going to help offset some of the money that we are spending with CO File. And so it can only be used for that purpose, and so we would like to start collecting that on all new civil and family cases and some subsequent filings in those cases.
Okay, great. I've got a motion. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. We also have a discuss and consider approval of overtime on our agenda, number 10. This is sort of a placeholder. And Dale, I'll yield to you.
We've gone through a few events, Hurricane Hannah, Tropical Storm Beta, those were both qualified disaster expense. Those were paid as according to our policy. For Tropical Storm Beta, we spent $1,1700 in payroll expense. For Hurricane Hannah, through the two weeks period that we were required to by our policy, we spent $77,584 in regular time, as well as overtime. For COVID-19, which we're still working under, we currently only have two employees that submitted, both within parks, for a total hours of $36, 36.5 hours of time. And at the rate that the pin would be, they're requesting to pay overtime of $1,354.55, and that's all the overtime we have at this moment.
Okay. Is there any motion? Okay, got a motion and a second. Second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, now we've got Juan here. He's got a couple that are important. The first has to do with the resolution regarding London Pirate Road. This is the requesting the city to formally annex this road. Juan?
Yes, Judge, Commissioners. This is a recommendation from Polyworks for the resolution between the city for London Pirate Road. It's from the beginning of 43, north of, on London Pirate Road, which was County Road 43. This was a project that Polyworks reconstructed the road, and it was a team effort between the city and the county. And we're recommending for it to be, to be able to be annexed.
Okay.
Judge?
Yes.
Judge, if I may, real quick, I want to thank Juan and his staff. He worked, they worked really hard to help get this facilitated. This was a long process. This has gone on for a long, long time, not, not to any fault of really anybody at the county, it just has taken a long time to get done. This is really a positive thing, should have been done when they annexed that area before. It was before Peters and only was city manager, and that was one of the first things he acknowledged coming in when we met, was that definitely should have been something that they annexed going in. So Juan did a great job and his staff, again, want to say, they did a great staff, a great job of getting that road completed, so that we now can go to the city and let them annex it. That was, as everybody remembers, part of the reason we renamed the road, because, and I think it's something we need to look at, Judge, there's still, I think, are a few county roads out there that aren't county roads anymore, but they're still named county roads, and it's very confusing. I just had one, in fact, this week, and I can't remember the number. And I'll have to go back and look, and Juan and I discussed that as well. I think we ought to go back and really look at getting the city, now that they've annexed it, to change these county roads, so that we don't get called, and we don't get blamed for things that aren't our issues anymore. That's kind of a bigger picture, but, but again, thanks to Juan and his staff, and I would definitely move passage. I think this is a good, positive step, and we've stabilized that road for now. The city and the developer is going to do the second phase, and then the city's going to eventually, I think, put that on their bond to make that an arterial or collector or something of that nature. So I would move passage on this, Judge.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second from Gonzalez, and thank you for the good explanation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And all this is coming to pass because of one wonderful word, growth. That's really what's happening out there. There's a lot of growth.
Juan, may I ask one question? Is this the same thing as 49, County Road 49, where that is and it continues to the right? Is this the same kind of a thing that we're looking at?
Can you repeat that, Commissioner? I'm sorry.
County Road, County Road 49, you know, where it dead ends, you know, before you go to the landfill, right?
Yes, sir.
And towards the right. Is that the same thing where?
It's pretty much the same thing, Commissioner.
We need to look at that road, probably.
Yes, sir. We probably need to just sit down and talk to the same.
Okay, thanks.
You know what I would recommend, is that you have a standing appointment with the city, once a month. We have gym meetings, join, you know, interagency meetings all the time for every major issue. The reason all of this stuff comes so disjointed is because we don't have a real nexus, and I need to do the same thing. I'm going to point the finger and say, I need to do the same thing. I need to have a standing meeting with the city manager, because he's the chief executive officer of the city, and we don't do enough of that. And it would really help, rather than piecemeal it, if you have your standings, then you can always be bringing these things up. Your counterpart's new, but you could get, I know you know him, but get a standing with him, and that way, all these good things happen.
Yes, Judge, and just to let you know, Commissioner, since we're talking about meeting with the city, we're doing a quarterly meeting with the city and Texas on a quarterly basis to discuss items like this.
Right.
So we'll be bringing it up at the next meeting.
Right. It's just that quarterly is just
Yes, ma'am.
So far.
I understand.
I mean, you know, I run seasons on quarters, not, not jobs. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Bimonthly?
Okay, awesome. How about our next one? This is a biggie. This is a discuss and consider the selection of the Smith Group for the Nueces County Medical Examiner's Facility Phase One Programming Validation and Concept Design, authorize the execution of professional service agreement. Before we get too much further, I'll go ahead and announce that we do have the funds for this. This is our CO 2019, and it's really important because we really don't, we have options, and we don't know how to get to those options on money to figure out how we can pay for a medical examiner's office. If we don't go through this concept of validation design. So it's my understanding, Juan, you've been working with the Smith Group and LAN to really hone in on kind of three options that we might be given. Tell us what you know.
Yes, ma'am. You're correct. What they're going to be looking at, Judge, is three options for, for the building and for the parking lot. And those, those will be evaluated and analyzed by the Smith Group and also with their consulting engineers or architects, to make sure that they can provide us a more detailed cost estimate of what the actual cost for the medical examiner is going to be. So it's a more thorough detail.
Okay.
But didn't we just pay 110,000 for the first design? So we're doing another design?
No, we're actually getting to the, to the part where we're going to say, so we, first of all, we haven't done any engineering designs. What we've done is the entire study, and, and now, conceptually, we need to decide, is it a $16 million building with no toxicology lab? Or is it a, you know, $20 million bill or $18 million bill with a shell of a toxicology lab? Or is it a third option where you get everything that you want, you know, built now? Does that make sense in the words? It's, you're actually going to get concepts, but not anything that you could take to a contractor yet. And then we'll choose. We'll say, we want to do design number two.
We give, we take or put?
Yeah. But then, once we know, then we're going to get them to give us a cost estimate, right, Juan?
That is correct.
And that cost estimate is what we'll live by. And then I hope that we can do some sort of a turnkey operation for that cost estimate that the court makes a decision on. And that way, we don't just leave it to the winds, because I think everyone wants to know what the building is going to contain and how much it'll cost, and this will get us there. And, and I honestly have not, thank you, I have not sat with the Smith, Smith Group again, but I know Juan has. And on, be honest with you, we're getting our money's worth on LAN on this particular project, because they have been really absorbing the architectural elements here, and so much so, they've been working with Belinda's team, I think it's Belinda and Kent. We have a whole new contract that we're going to have here in the county, which is basically like an architectural master service contract.
That is correct.
But you don't have to be 3300 square feet, right? 33,000?
It, it's whatever the feasibility study tells you that is the best thing. But you, you're right. You could say, I'm going to build out 30,000 square feet, and then 3,000 will be a shell for growth or for a lab or whatever. But these guys were now going to take you from what they told you you need to, here are three concepts to choose from, you know? And, and that's, you can do it a different way, but the court's pleasure, it seemed last time, was that you were unsure as to what it would really cost. We threw out a number of 20, it could range anywhere from, what?
20 mil.
25, from, from 20 to 25 million?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I'm just thinking, Judge, the way we can kind of, like have a workshop ourselves and just say what we really want in that building. I mean, you know, I'm just, I don't want to just pay somebody more money for doing something else we're not going to use, we're not going to do. But
Yeah.
I'm just saying, something, you know, what, what do we actually want in that building?
I think, though, I agree with you. I think the way you're going to know what you want is for them to actually give you these validation designs. Nothing we use now is wasted, because whatever design you choose, they'll, that will be a head start. At least that was one of the questions we asked.
It'll be kind of
Is Chris on?
It'll be kind of like a conceptual plan.
Well, you know what? JP?
We've got JP. And, and Judge, we have Eric Huffman with Smith Group.
Let's, let's punt, forgive me, because those are excellent questions, Commissioner. And let's punt this to the experts, JP and Eric, but let's go with JP first. You're the program manager. You really are here to be our eyes and ears and independence. Tell us why you think this is a good service, and then we might quiz Eric on what he's actually going to do for us.
Yeah, absolutely, Judge. The reason that this is so important at this stage is we could have a facility that ranged from 16 to 25 million based on the decisions that the court would choose to make about what this facility contains in terms of total operations, fit, and finish. The work that we are hoping to authorize the Smith Group to perform will give the court the details required to make an informed decision about which facility we are going to latch on to and spend the next 12 months designing and the next 12 months building. So this is a very important milestone in terms of the life cycle of this project for the court to approve and then allow Smith Group to spend the next eight weeks refining designs conceptually, just conceptually, and pricing to go along with that. They have, in fact, brought a consultant along with them as a part of this proposal that will do cost estimating services. So we know that at the end of this, we'll have something that is reliable for the court to use in making future decisions about which project exactly to move forward under the heading of Medical Examiner's Facility.
Do we know the projected cost for this validation?
Yes, we do. The projected cost for the ballot for the contract, JP?
$55,000.
And that's for the Smith Group, right?
Yes, for the Smith Group.
Okay.
What was that number? I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
$55,000. And JP?
Thank you.
Would you say that the work that we're going to expend now is work that we will then capitalize on? You will, as, we call them force multipliers sometimes, but we're not going to, you know, take this and go, okay, thank you, we're never to be used again. This will become the foundation for the real design. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. What we would call this would be, you know, the first push on the flywheel, Judge. When they finish their work and we present those findings to the court, and the court ultimately makes a decision about the nature and scope of this project, the next step immediately following will be for Smith Group to prepare a proposal for the remainder of the design and construction phase services. But without knowing exactly which project they're designing and participating during construction phase, we just weren't comfortable with the cost proposal that would be coming forward to the court for that larger architectural engineering phase services. So this step is important for laying out the work that needs to be done going forward, as well as giving us, as I said, a little touch on the flywheel to get the project spinning.
I think it's also important for me, as, as an ambassador for Nueces County, to be able to have this, so that if there is an opportunity to have an educational institution partner with us, that I can show them options. I can say, if, you know, if A, then B. If you join us, then this toxicology lab would be available to you and to your, you know, educational institution. Those are the types of things that are game changers, as far as, I spoke with Claiborne County just yesterday on a completely different matter, but I was asking about their backlog. They had a murder case and their backlog on a lab. And he says, you know, the worst part is, he says, it's not even just the time, it's how expensive it is for our county. And, and then, in the interest of justice, we don't get quick turnaround. They send, you know, some of their most important toxicology to Dallas. So I think that it gives us a chance also to get our partners and to weigh in on this is what this concept would be. You know, we can make a decision, but I think until we get these validations of what it would actually look like in cost, it's hard to know what a BCA would look like, a benefit cost analysis.
And I agree, and I think, I mean, we're way over due for a lap in this area, you know, and I really support that, because, you know, I think, not only for us, but all 12 county areas would probably benefit from it, and probably more. I just don't want, I mean, I like to have a lab, but I don't have, think, I don't want to have a building that's three times size just because we want to have a lab. I mean, I'm saying, I don't know, maybe.
Well, right. And that's what, I think that what you'll see in these designs is that, yeah, the lab is just a component, but that's what they'll get a chance to see, is how does a lab structure? Well, Eric, maybe I'll punt to you now. How, you know, tell us a little bit about what you're going to do to help answer this Commissioner's question. How does, how does the services you're about to provide get us to help him answer that question of what is it, what does that look like square footage of the whole building?
Well, this, this gives us a more precise opportunity to take the feasibility study analysis that we did and apply it to where you are now, as well as where you conceivably really want to be in the next few years. And that kind of decision-making will help you decide how, how to go about what's going to happen now, as well as maybe preparing better for the future. It may look differently in whatever different scenario. It could be a piece of the building is added on to, and that space is saved for it. It could be a shell that is built out later, and it could simply be that you need those services now. And I think that's a back and forth with the user groups, and it's a back and forth with the county, just to make sure that we are drilling down to what the true needs are at this time, and the best, the best use of the dollar at this point. All of these services are beneficial to you. They're beyond the phase of the feasibility study, but they're what we would normally start with in the whole design process. We clipped it out so that we could take this small part and be able to try to dial into a little bit better of what the cost would be, so that you could make those decisions without bringing us on for a full design phase.
And that really helps. Yeah, that really helps. Rather than just say, go, go spend, you know, X, seven figures on design, why don't we, you know, take a look at what we're, how, this is where we start. So I think it's important for them to know that we didn't have any design services in So I think it's important for them to know that we didn't have any design services in Phase One, your feasibility analysis. This actually gets us to where we have to start, no matter what kind of building we're going to, um, build.
Judge, if I, if I, if I could, I, I really appreciate this approach. Uh, I had, you know, some initial concerns over doing exactly what you said we're not doing, which I appreciate, which was just spending, you know, just kinda go and spending, as you said, a lot more money for the design. But this is a little bit of a, uh, I think, a more pragmatic approach to really kinda pausing a little bit and, and, and starting, but then getting some input and finding out what the court's wishes are and before we spend the, the, the bigger amount. So I, I personally, I, I appreciate this, this, this is a lot more, it's a lot easier for me to s- to swallow. And I'd really like to, to get with the Smith Group when, um, they have the ability or the time to, to talk, because I'd like to really kinda do this outside of court and kinda dig into the, where they're going with this. I don't wanna spend a lot of time showing charges for it, but I, I would like to do that if that's okay. But, but this is a lot more comfortable to, to do than, than, um, going forward with the two or three hundred thousand dollar design, and then we don't use it. So I, I appreciate this way of doing it, thank you.
Why, thank you, Commissioner Chesney.
You're welcome, Judge Canales.
Great day for me. No, I really do appreciate it. And you know what? Um, the truth is, is that Eric, uh, I know, would be probably happy, Chris as well. Let's make sure that happens. Uh, JP really, it represents the county, so you'll wanna bring him in, because there are definite, uh, opportunities here. And the whole idea is, don't make a mistake by either rushing into something or by not really understanding what your options are on the table. And then once we, oh, by the way, let's talk about timetable. Um, what is your timetable for this particular, uh, service?
Eight to ten weeks.
It's a little over eight weeks.
Okay, so, we've got some time there, Commissioner, uh, but you might wanna reach out immediately.
I, I will, in fact, I'm sending an email right now, I will do that, thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet. Okay, thank you, so, uh, are there, are there any questions for JP or for Eric? Okay. Um, also, I wanna ask a, a legal question. Lauta, we were also waiting for the hospital district to kinda give us the, uh, paperwork, if you will. They've been working with Krista Spahn on the actual site. Could we get an update on that next court?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think, I haven't seen it across my desk. I think we need to push on that a little bit. Okay, thank you. Um, so, having good discussion about that, um, and if there's nothing further, do I have a motion to select the Smith Group?
So moved.
Thank you, for the validation and concept design, and, and do you authorize the execution of the professional service agreement in the motion? And would that be all right if I add those words? Do you still make the motion? And a second? And motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay, okay, so opposed, same sign. And now, that takes us now to purchasing. We, I promise, we're working our way through here, Commissioners. Um. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Com- what'd you do? I'm sorry. No, sir. Commissioner, this goes back to you, this was from your original, uh, to me, there. And, um. Hi, Sheriff. Good to see you. Michael.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
This is, uh, Discussing Award, RFP number thirty-one thirty-nine dash twenty, tax exempt lease purchase financing. Uh, the county requested, is requesting lease purchase financing proposals for the cost of the Energy Savings Performance Contract, which we, uh, that the court, uh, approved on last session, uh, with ABM. And this is the funding portion of that. Uh, we, uh, conducted a proposal opening on October first, uh, we received three bids. And, uh, in my, in your scoring sheet, you'll see there how we rated the three proposals that were received. Uh, we received proposals from Frost Bank, All American Investment Group LLC, and Bank of America Public Capital Corporation. Uh, the committee, uh, reviewed those proposals, and you can see in, uh, the evaluation, it has the rates that were proposed to us. Uh, we won't discuss the rate amounts in this meeting, uh, but you can see those there, and you can see the payment schedules attached behind. And, and so, after reviewing these, uh, we also consulted with Noe Hinajosa, uh, who, uh, basically, uh, gave us the, the go-ahead that we were seeing, the same thing he was seeing. And, and so with that, the committee recommends award to Bank of America Public Capital Corp. And, uh, Lisa Tames from Bank of America is actually on the Zoom call right now, so if y'all have any questions for her, she's available as well.
Judge, I have a quick question.
Of course.
Um, explain what it says fifteen-year lease at one point eight four six percent with any time call at one hundred two percent of par.
You, I thought we weren't supposed to talk numbers.
Yeah, we weren't.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Chesney.
But why can't, I don't understand why we can't talk about them.
Well, we can't talk numbers because we're just doing the award phase right now, we would enter to negotiations after that.
Yeah. Um, Commissioner, how about if I do it this way? Is it Lisa?
Yes.
Yes.
She can explain the concept.
Yeah, I had, that's what I was gonna say, Lisa, would you explain the, the concept and try not to talk about the actual rates for us? Is that okay?
Yes, Judge, I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk to you and not to, I will not talk about rates. Um, the rate is the interest rate that's fixed for the entire fifteen-year term, and the, the county has the option to prepay. Um, and when they want, um, there is a premium that is charged that is on the, uh, that's there. Um, but you just have the, the option to prepay at your option. Usually, we have it on a payment date, um, but that, that, that's really what it means.
Does that help, Commissioner?
Well, can someone just explain the concept of what I described, if that's not a problem? I, I don't.
So the, the.
And as always, I don't know how to compare these three proposals without talking about something, so I, and I just don't understand what that means. And so, I don't know how to ask it without, without violating anything.
Sure, sure, I, I mean, I could tell you that you, um, have the, the, you have the option to prepay, which means that if at any time you decide that you want to pay it off early, you can do that.
That's the call part of it.
The interest rate, the interest rate is the rate that is, how to calculate the interest cost on the amortization schedule. As you can see on the amortization schedule, see the interest cost. But the prepayment is just, it gives the county the flexibility and the option to pay off the loan, the lease purchase agreement, when they choose.
Could you hear all that, Commissioner?
I did, I, I, I'm just not sure what I'm supposed to ask and not ask, so let's just go ahead and move forward, and I'll, I'll get it later.
Let me, and let me just, let me supplement here. So number one, you highlighted it, Michael, but let me, uh, highlight again. And that is, is that we definitely had our FA look at these, um, these proposals. And, um, and of course, he is intimately involved with all the lending institutions that, uh, you know, made a proposal, made a bid. And it's really without question, uh, that all the members of the committee ranked the recommended, uh, award, uh, entity, BOA, unequivocally, Brent, I'm trying to give you some tea leaves here, that the interest rate that you're seeing is the particular rate that all four of us believed is in our best interest, and in fact, uh, is, uh, is, um, well, I'll just leave it at that, is it, is it our best interest?
I'm good, Judge.
Yeah.
I'm okay, I, I trust the committee's recommendation.
Right.
I just, I'll ask my technical questions elsewhere. Thank you very much.
Right, right, and, and I think it's good to note that Michael said that we are going to be, um, the purpose of the RFP, right, is when it comes to court, is to make the recommendation, court then awards, and then a negotiation takes place. And so Lisa understands that, and there might be, you know, for example, on that call rate, on par, whether it's a hundred and two percent, um, you know, of par or par, right? I mean, th- those are things that we, we get to discuss.
Yes, Lisa, did you wanna elaborate on what happens next?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. So upon award, we will, um, set up a, a, a call with your team, including your attorneys, and our team and our attorney, and we will provide you in advance a checklist of all the documents that are required for closing. We will discuss all of them, and the purposes, purpose of each, and who's responsible for preparing. We will discuss all the, and who's, also, what documents we would need from the county. And then also, we would discuss timing, what would be the best time for the closing to happen, and that would be based on any more, any other, uh, committee meetings or any other board or, or meetings that, court meetings that you may have to approve it. And we would work with you guys to just come up with a date of closing. And then, we would provide also distribution list to the whole team, so that you have everyone's contact information at the bank. So if at any time you have any questions, you'll have a list of people that would be able to, um, respond to your questions. And usually, this call, this introduction call or kickoff call, as we call it, usually happens within a week of the award.
Right, and I believe our, our goal with this is to try to get this executed out before the end of the month, so that we can, um, start getting shovels in the ground or, or ballasts installed in the building.
And I'm not trying to delve into the mind of Commissioner Chesney, but the whole thing is, I think he really wanted explanation of par rate is, that's what I'm guessing.
Um, in, in my proposal, I believe, um, the, so, in my proposal, I had offered, um, the prepayment, um, at any time, at any payment date, um, at a hundred and two percent. The propos- I believe you're, um, so we can discuss this, um, but par means at the bal- is the outstanding balance.
Right, I, I think, does that help, Commissioner? I'm trying to read between the lines, is, I think it was the issue of the hundred and two percent of par that was.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's what I would like to figure out, why we're doing, why we're doing that. As we negotiate that, maybe that would be a better time to do that.
Okay, so we can discuss that another time, I'm happy to talk to you guys about that.
Thank you.
That's great, that helps. Okay.
My pleasure.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's just more procedural, I mean, we, I know we don't always have, uh, proposals that, that come from purchasing that maybe have exclusive information, but for future reference, Michael, make sure that you get with the county attorney so that we can ask these questions in private. Um, you know, it, I have a problem already with the policy that we have in place, and I'd like to see this addressed, uh, Tyner, on the next meeting, as far as our policy with purchasing. I think it's a very flawed system that I've never really dealt with in, in all my years of, of public service with the school district or with the city of Corpus Christi. Uh, but I think that, you know, the little error that we had earlier could be prevented and allow us to ask questions freely without disclosing that publicly. I mean, because my, my first gut was to ask something very similar. And I'm, I'm glad that Commissioner Chesney stepped in at first, but, um, not really, but I mean, I'm making a joke, I'm making a joke.
I know what you mean.
But I, I think, anytime we have something like that, and I don't know, legally, can we or should we? But just if we can make sure that, I think we need to look at the overall, uh, policy that we have with this, just to help us clean it up, to make sure that, you know, because there, there's a lot of data here, and you know, and, and the other issue is, you know, we're given data that many times we don't get to mail it over several meetings. Um, so, we need to be, be able to ask those, those questions that, that come up to us as soon as we see that data before, so, that would just be my concern.
They are, are verbatim by statute. And really, what it is, is that it gives you the opportunity to negotiate, and if you bring out the numbers, then you basically get yourself in, in not in a good position to actually negotiate that price. So that, that's the whole, um, gist behind the law.
Yeah, so basically.
But we do have a policy in place whereby you can go to the purchasing department and actually look at records and so on and forth.
With the day of.
So that's something where we need to kinda remind the court that this is available, and I don't know if, maybe this was not available at the, till the last minute, and that could have been the problem here.
Yeah, so, uh, one action I think that we can take from procurement side is just to make sure that we duly notice, notice the court when we're conducting a bid opening on particular bids.
I think that's good.
Every time we do an opening, that way, you, you know that day that bids are available, uh, and you can come down and take a look.
Well, and I, and I also think that it's, you can also just table it. I mean, if there's something that's this important, then maybe you just put it on executive session notice, um, you know, so that we can discuss it, you know. Of course, I'm not sure which exemption it would fall under, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if.
I don't know if it falls under an exemption.
I, I think the.
I've never taken the strict view of executive session that gets interpreted here, because to me, under the government code, if you need to speak with your lawyer about a matter that the government code specifically authorizes, then you get to go into an executive session. Now, this business of notice is important for transparency, but my opinion is, and, and until very recently at the port, which was the last year I was there, we didn't notice individually, because the statute requires that you file the exemption, not that you tell everybody what you're going into executive session for. That's our policy here, but I believe if, if Vernon's chapters are met, we have a right to go into executive session. That's my personal belief, but we notice here, that's our process.
That's based upon, uh, attorney general positions that have really evaluated the whole gist behind open government, open meetings.
Yeah, the guy that's accused of bribery, yeah, that one.
Yes.
Yeah, that one's real interesting.
But, and, and, and Judge, if I can kinda pitch in here, this is one of the things that, you know, Laura and I've had discussions on, and we haven't always agreed, and I don't mean any disrespect for that, because most of the time, I, I agree with Laura. But to me, if it, if we, if it says on the, the, there that we can go into executive session on anything posted on the agenda, then to me, that's what we ought to be able to do, because sometimes, when you're in the middle of an agenda item, a legal issue comes up that you need to go to, or something regarding a negotiation which is confidential needs to, and if you happen to not have posted that item specifically under executive session, then you're, then according to the county attorney, we can't do that. So I don't agree with that interpretation either, respectfully, and, and think if we're gonna say, have language on there that says we can go at any time, then we ought to be able to go at any time, if it's, if it's legitimate and, and falls within what we can go into executive session for.
And I think you're right, I think best practices are how we do it, where we notice it, but then it happens, it happened this morning with Kevin Kishnik, you know?
He didn't have, he didn't have anything for his sector. I spoke to him.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I didn't know, but he called, and I said, I wanna make sure. He was okay.
He was.
Okay, but this one, this one really call, calls into question, um, uh, matters relating to, um, real property. I know it's not probably the, the, the essence of it, but, I mean, I'm, I guess where, where we are, back to you, John, is that we'll, we'll work on it, okay? I think, Michael, I think I have a gut feeling as to which ones need to come into executive session, and we could work with Laura ahead of time. But I think for this one, what's really important is that, um, this one is really straight up. I think what makes it tricky is that, Lisa, none of us are really finance majors up here, and only because we've had some opportunity in the past to delve into, um, you know, banking relationships here, uh, with our bonds, that I'm a little, I'm comfortable with the terminology, but I think it's, it's easy to see how the explanation is, is a good background, a good foundation. But I think comfortably, guys, what you're talking about is, you can, it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity, and maybe you can explain that, Lisa, to prepay. In other words, it's not a penalty, it's a prepayment opportunity here, the interest rate. Go ahead.
That is correct, so your interest rate is your interest rate, which we will not mention.
Right.
And then, the, that is separate and apart from the prepayment. So the prepayment gives the county at any time, let's say in five years or ten years, from now you decide that you want to pay it off, and maybe you issue a bond, or you just have enough cash in your coffers to pay it off, you can do that, and you could send us a notice letting us know that you're going to be prepaying the lease, and we'll go from there.
Correct, so.
Flexibility, it could, we, what we're doing is we're giving the county flexibility with their finances.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to point out to the court, is, this is a. Yeah, that's what I was trying to point out to the court is, this is a good thing. What you really need to know is, commissioners, you have in front of you the score sheets with the interest rates, and you need to look at those interest rates and make a decision. Everything else-
Judge.
Is not, uh, is only for our benefit. Yeah.
Judge, I would move passage, subject to negotiation, as we normally do.
Second.
Okay, good job. Ma, I've got a motion, a second. Are there any other questions for Michael? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and the motion for the clerk is for the recommendation by the committee to make the, you wanna go ahead and say it again?
Well, we just recommend award to Bank of America.
Right, just needed to be on the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
That would be my motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Um, number two is discuss another award, Michael.
Yes.
This one's a Horace Caldwell peer observation deck.
Judge, um, before you get too far into that, um, based on, um, a couple of different things, I would like to move to, um, table that until the next meeting. But, 'cause I've still got some funding discussions to be had on that one.
Yeah, um, Michael doesn't know this, so I'm gonna, uh-
It's fine.
Kind of enlighten, Michael, for the twentieth, the issue is, is we, we have been apprised as a court as to the awards, and I think we will, I'd like to tell the audience and everybody that we can make this award very comfortably, but we have to do so with a funding source. And Commissioner Chesney and I need to sit down, since he and I together built that funding source, and I just wanna share with you and the court that we think that we can do this by next court.
Yeah, and I, and I would comment, uh, to the court that what I try to do as your procurement agent is give y'all as an aggressive schedule as we can-
Right.
And place these items in the hopes that things work out, uh, so that we have every opportunity to put a shovel in the ground sooner. And so, uh, that's why it was placed here. I know we just opened this a few days ago. Um, and so certainly-
It's all, it's all good.
It's all good.
Certainly fine, certainly fine to, uh-
Yeah.
To table it to the next time when, uh, the funding is, is all arranged.
Right, we just wanna be able to explore all the, we wanna sit with Dale and really explore the opportunities, and I will tell you that Teresa's been working overtime anyway to make sure that there's several options for Commissioner Chesney and I to mull over. The reason I say Commissioner Chesney and I is because you'll remember, folks, that we made a, um, you know, commitment to, to put this package together, so.
Yeah, and, and, and if, I just wanted to add a comment, just to reinforce that it seems to just be a funding matter. Uh, we did get a letter from Hanson recommending, uh, our award.
I was wondering about that.
And so we don't have any issues with the awardee.
Great, thank you for that one.
That I'm aware of.
I, I picked on that one. Thank you.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so I'm excited about this one. Just know that this one is a table, but with a smile, coming back on the twentieth. Really exciting to be able to, to move forward. Thank you. All those in favor of the table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Did I get a second? Uh, well, Commissioner tabled and I think-
Second, a second.
Commissioner Gonzalez did, yeah. Thank you. Now we have, um, uh, let me skip to four, just because I know that one's, uh, a very fast and furious one. Go ahead. That's the IB McGee.
Yes, okay, so this was discussing award IFB number thirty-one twenty-eight dash twenty for the IB McGee multipurpose facility repairs. We conducted a bid opening on September twenty-ninth, uh, however, we did not receive any bids, uh, when we, um, conducted that opening. So our, our recommendation, uh, in discussions that we had is, we basically recommend to reject all bids and rebid this item at a later date.
So moved.
Okay, I just wanna-
That's the official. There's some more explanation to come after this.
Right, I just wanna say, your motion is to reject bids. I wanna leave it at that right now, just reject bids, because I think that there is a real opportunity here for another mechanism that Juan has, uh, basically, you know, come up with that for, I don't even mind saying it, for job order contracting. And, um, and so I don't wanna like say we're gonna do an R, a future RFP, because it may be a different method of procurement through the buy board or through the state contracts. Is that okay, Commissioner Chesney? We just reject bids today?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not even rejecting a bid. We don't have a bid.
Uh, yeah, it's a, it's a theoretical bid, but yeah.
I think it's just the official, uh, language that we have to say.
Yeah.
Should we just table it? Should we just table it?
Yeah, I don't really think we're rejecting anything.
Laura, what's the, uh, we have no bids, so-
You're just acknowledging, we're just acknowledging. You don't even have to take an action.
Okay, no action. I withdraw my motion.
Cause there's no, there's no bid. It's information only.
So, so Judge, this is Scott.
Hey, Scott.
Let me ask a question here. So, so Michael and myself and, and Scott Harris with L A N, we did some strategizing, and so not knowing what y'all are thinking, we were expecting that once we took this action, we could try to do some digging along with Scott Mears, but it sounds like I need to get with y'all before I pull the trigger on anything.
I think that's-
Yes, please.
I think that's a good idea. Look, like, like anything, um, we tried one avenue. It did not work. Uh, there was another company that you had initiated interest with, that didn't work. We now believe that, um, working on the coast is, there's no, there's no doubt about it. It's tricky, you know? And, um, it's got a lot of, a lot of, uh, special considerations. So we think that we can utilize a, a new method of procurement if we want to get this building up and running quickly. And let me just say that the funding source for this is secure a hundred percent, and that's our C O twenty nineteen and how important it is to get this building going. And that's why I'd like to just say nothing, because maybe October twentieth, we have a real mechanism to, uh, to get, to get this building going.
And, and Scott, I'll, I'm gonna send an email to, um, to the judge and copy Maggie about getting a time set up with her, and I'll get you in on that too, so that we can powwow on the whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't wanna take any action and, and then go in the direction y'all don't wanna go in.
Right, and I believe, I believe, uh, JP, um, who's also on the call, uh, they were, they were the designers on this, is that correct?
Yeah, no, not JP's group. JP's program management, it came from another division. It was Scott Harris-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Who's, um, yeah, on this one.
It's a different group, but, uh, part of L A N.
Correct.
And, uh, they had some suggestions as well, so I just wanna let Commissioner Chesney know if he wants to pull in, uh, JP Grom. They may have some advisory.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Thank you very much. I appreciate knowing that. I will, we'll get that coordinated as fast as I can get on the judge's schedule. Thank you very much.
Okay, guys, sounds good. So now, I just thought we could finish that. Now, uh, we're gonna go into, um, uh, an item that, uh, does need to go to executive session, and that's a discuss and award RFP number three-one-three-seven dash two-zero, Medical Services in Ways and Childs County Jail. And it's, even though it's listed Juvenile Justice Center, we actually dispensed with that, I think, the last time, but, um-
Yeah, I don't think we've, we stated it in court, but I, I can go ahead and state it now that, uh, Homer Flores had requested that juvenile, uh, be withdrawn from consideration of, uh, any of the medical services at the juvenile department. They found an alternate solution, uh, for their in-house medical.
Okay, and, uh, I will take a little advice here from, from counsel. Do you want us to, um, proceed at this time? To executive session, and then we'll come back and do the auditors later? All right, let's do that then. Uh, Dale, is that fine with you?
Yeah.
Okay, Dale's got a few things, and then that'll be one of our, our last items since we took human resources early. And so at this time, let me give public notice that commissioners are electing to go into executive session as we are authorized to do so by provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. In the event the commissioners' court do go into executive session, as we are doing so, this is also in accordance with the authority of Vernon's Code, Section five-five-one, oh-seven-one, oh-seven-two, oh-seven-three, oh-seven-four, seven-five, seven-six, eight-six, and eight-seven, and we are doing so to consult with our attorney, including matters related to litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security, devices, economic development. And here's the big one, any other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of executive session, the commissioners' court may be in open session, take such actions appropriation, uh, as appropriate on items discussed in executive session. Okay, so it's, uh, for the clerk, twelve forty-four, this is our only item, and so I would just do a, a hold, okay? I wouldn't-
Okay, we're going on mute, Judge.
If you wanna grab a quick sandwich, but I don't expect us to be that long. Okay. We are back on the record, and the time for the clerk is two-twenty-two P M. And, um, when we last left for executive session, and Laura, I realize I did not sign for you. Okay, but I'll get back to doing that. We were discussing Michael's, um-
Discussing award RFP-
Correct.
Number thirty-one thirty-seven dash twenty, Medical Services-
That, that's correct.
For the jail.
That's correct. And, um, after much discussion and, um, dis, both from a legal pers, mainly from a legal perspective, but we also asked you to come in as a resource, uh, along with the sheriff and Ernest, and we wanna thank Ernest for his willingness to represent the county in doing all of the necessary, um, we called it evaluating it apples to apples. It really helped us. And also just looking at all of the bids and their holistic approach, uh, it, it helped give the court some insight. And so, uh, at this time, I am, um, going to ask the court, uh, for a motion, and, um, we will proceed.
I'd like to make a motion, Judge, we accept Armour as the, uh, medical provider for the jail at, and annex.
Okay, and I, I have a motion and, um-
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and, um, for the reasons stated in executive session, um, I'm going to abstain from this vote. And, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Pose same sign. I've got one no for the clerk.
Judge, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so I've got, um, um, for the record, two abstentions for the clerk. So Michael, um, the award will go to, um, to Armour and, um, by, by, uh, majority of the quorum of the court.
Okay, we'll come back on, uh, as soon as possible, uh, with the contract execution, uh, at the next available commissioner court date or the one after that.
Okay, okay. All right, okay, um, and-
Judge, can I ask a question on that?
Yes, sir.
With, with that award, do we still have the opportunity to negotiate? Uh, Laura, I guess that's a question for you, to negotiate as good a price as possible as we can on that?
Yes, sir. Laura's nodding.
Yes.
Okay, I would just ask that, that be done based on discussions, please.
You'll bring that back, Michael.
Yes.
Okay.
Likely be October twenty-first. Uh, we're trying to get ahead of the expiration of the current contract on November thirty.
Okay, all right. And, um, at this time, Michael, you have another one to go over with us here.
We skipped ahead and we covered it already.
Oh, we did. We did number four. You're right.
I'm done.
Okay, Michael, thank you. I'll turn to Dale now in the auditors department and ask that, um, that we, um, go over your change order, although I'm missing, here it is. It's, uh, change order number eighty-eight.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, uh, items I have for your consideration are, uh, change order for our project capital funds, uh, we have, uh, three of our different, uh, projects. We have, uh, nineteen oh-one funding source, our two thousand and four C Os, and our two thousand and nineteen tax note evaluations. A lot of them, pardon me, are, are reallocation of some funds and creating some new positions. For example, nineteen oh-one, we have to do the fifth floor bu, uh, building renovations, and we're moving some money from a, uh, un, un, unallocated funds of miscellaneous projects. However, we're closing some other projects that have been, uh, finalized to get some of the rest of the funds done. And we're doing that same thing for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and nineteen, uh, the two thousand and nineteen C Os, you'll see a few new projects on, on the list they have. Uh, these are being taken out of our unallocated funds, and Teresa provides you a list of the entire balance we have for the, the, the fund available. These are the suggestions that we bring, bring to you for project capital funds, and I submit this for your request and approval.
Okay, everything looks in order here, but are there any questions before I move on? I'll make the motion to approve budget order eighty-eight, and, uh, got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? I'll just kinda remind everybody, please be working with the auditor and, and, uh, on the concept of, uh, uh, using your C Os. Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn, for using your C Os for a great project that we can't wait to, you know, see in its entirety, but please, please work with them and really find a way to use them.
I'm proud of you, Commissioner.
Yeah, it's a great thing. And it's hard, because you don't wanna just throw it. You have to put it at a really good project. It has to be very thoughtful, but I just wanna make sure that you, you look at that as we enter a new fiscal year. The second-
And with all the, the commissioners as well, uh, with the Commissioner Gonzalez, he's got a few projects possibly coming up soon and, uh-
His is next, I think.
And, uh, and now working with Commissioner Vaughn to try to get some of the, the funds used, but for a, a very, very important pro, uh, progress and, and, uh, making, uh, our county in the, in the, uh, that side of the, of the county of, as, as great as we can to try to bring in more people. So that's, it's a great use of the funds.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you take us to the schedules, the pay schedules, A and P? These reflect the adjustments, uh, discussed on September ninth, and of course, this takes us to the beginning of our new fiscal year.
Yes, Your Honor, when we went through our budgeting processes, we did, uh, a few, uh, re, re, uh, uh, calc, calculation of some, some of our, our salaries, and we felt it was imperative and, and a, a good deci, decision to, uh, split our pay schedules from, uh, 'cause everybody was on a pay schedule A, and we've now moved them from, uh, there's a pay schedule A, and a pay schedule P. Pay schedule P is more for your, uh, degreed professionals. So we may move those to the year, year, for, thus pay groups twenty-nine and above, which is normally requires a degree and advanced knowledge of your, your balances to consider yourself a professional. We've did this to help in the future to do the balances. So what we did, we kept pay schedule A for the remaining of the employees, and this was increased from, uh, what our council living increase was for, of two percent. So we went from last year to this year at, at, at two percent for pay schedules, one through twenty, twenty-eight, I believe, twenty-seven, I believe it should be. No, one to twenty-eight, I agree. And then on the, the pay schedule P, we went, this was from last year, we went from twenty-nine and above, and this was a five percent increase. This way we try to, uh, help out the, the court to be able to, with, uh, the majority of the employees that will be on pay schedule A. So, um, we did this to, to be able to help ours, H R, as well as, as y'all, to determine how to best handle some, some pay values. So we brought this to you to, for, it has to be approved, 'cause this will be the, uh, balances that will be in effect and will be on your next, uh, on the next pay period for all employees that, that are there, and, and I submit this for your approval.
Thank you, Dale. I, it accurately reflects our budget, so I'm happy to make this motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Dale, that's all for you. We've handled-
Going more.
Oh, the next page. You're right. Number three, uh, E R P. This is a good one.
I wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh, we've been with the, uh, current provider we've had for, for many, many years, is probably going on twenty or thirty-plus years. Uh, they've been gone through a few, uh, the changes in ownership and a few, uh, uh, hiccups on the road for, with, with, with the design of their systems, and right now just not meeting the needs we, we have to, to, to come up with. And they are trying to move to a web-based software, but everybody that we know that's with this software, that's gone to this web-based software, they tell us to avoid it by all means possible. So with that, I'm, I'm trying to bring it to your attention that we will probably need be needing a new accounting financial software for, for our system. It's probably a good idea, 'cause we, like I said, we've been with this company for many, many years. It's time to, to, to branch off and look for, uh, somewhere else. We've, we've, we've been talking to a few accountants, we've been talking to a few different software companies. We haven't made a decision yet. We haven't made a decision yet. I just wanted to bring it to your attention because this will be a possible need. As we know, when we change softwares, it's not going to be cheap. It's anywhere, once we do the conversion from our data software, it can be anywhere from 1 million to 6 million. We're hoping it's closer than 1 million than the 6. One company we talked to was at the 6 to 7 million dollar range. And we said, well, that's probably out of our range. But we're still probably anywhere between 1 to 1.5 million with the first year cost. Why I'm bringing this to your attention is because I know we don't have this available in our funds. I know we're in the process of doing some more CIP, some more possible issuance of debt or maybe reallocation of some of our current debt, that maybe I can use some of those funds to be able to do what I need to do. And once I decide to bring a software company to you, I'll make sure y'all see the company before we even talk business with them or negotiate with them, to show you what it is. I'm working with purchasing, I'm working with HR, I'm working with my staff, I'm working with anybody that touches our system to make sure we don't lose anything in our conversion. We want to make sure we keep getting the same thing we currently have, but better. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that this is something we will be doing in the very near future. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of this.
Thank you. I think it's obviously great for our awareness and timely. I think that whether we've talked about this or not, we need to update our capital improvement plan. This is really an important piece of, we know a lot more because we have feasibility studies. And we're also sort of getting under the hood here at the courthouse, so we're going to be able to update those numbers. So I think this needs to be added to the CIP, and this is for discussion, but it does say consideration. So I don't know if a motion would be proper, but I'd like to make sure that this gets added to our capital improvement plan and that we start putting our heads together to making certain that any future funding includes, any future COs includes this as a high priority. And I wouldn't, I would actually entertain on another occasion, Dale, maybe we even have dollars from this CO to get us started. But I'm a little confused between the 1 and the 6, so maybe some more information.
Well, one of the companies we talked to said, because all the data conversion, it would be, and this is a very large company. So they have a lot of professionals they had to pay for, of course. So they said it would be $3 million per function, and we have two functions. We have general core financial and we have payroll, HR PY, and those would be 2 to 3 million dollars apiece. This other company we talked to, they're newer in the market. They've only been around for a year or two, maybe three. And they said they could probably do anywhere from a million to a million and a half, so.
Well, if you will dig more into the million, million and a half, I think we might have the money now.
That's what I'm trying to talk to you, but I want to make sure they have everything.
But I mean, I want you to be feel really good.
Yes.
Don't pick on nothing because it's cheap, don't. It's got to be good.
That's what I mean. I don't want to get the cheap one to get cheap, but I want to make sure it has everything we have.
You've got to know all the bells and whistles. Well, I'm happy to bring this back as soon as possible. I mean, commissioners, I feel this is very important. Just turns out everything ages about the same time, including me.
I just want to make sure I work with Michael to make sure we have what he needs for his central supply area. We have what we need for, to make sure we have our P cards available, which we still have. Make sure we have our PO system still functioning, have a better fixed asset module than what we have right now. Ours right now is very, very bad. And also make sure it's still able to do the financing side. And with this, I want to try to incorporate a timing attendance together with it. Because right now, we rely on executive time through Tyler to tie in our system, which is not a very good tie-in. So I want to make sure everything works together. So that's where we're trying to get all the stuff together.
Wonderful. Okay, that sounds good. No action at this time, though?
No noise.
Okay, thank you. And so now I can announce to the court that we've done human resources earlier. And we also have gone into executive session and completed that task. And so, believe it or not, even though you all have been amazing and haven't eaten lunch yet, it's 2:35, 2:36, and I'd ask for adjournments in memory. And I'm going to look for the one that I know I have, but let me see who you have. It's the same one. Yeah. I'll join Commissioner Modis on mine. Commissioner Vaughn doesn't have one. Commissioner Modis, will you start this one off? I know all of us are going to feel that we would like to join in this adjournment in memory for this very special friend.
I'm sure Commissioner Gonzalez is also.
Yeah.
Julian Camacho, 49 years old, passed away in sudden illness on Sunday, September the 27th. Julian is the general manager and co-owner of Camacho Demolition, a built-up company from the ground up. They started on his own along with his brother Isaac and the rest of the family. And so my thoughts and my prayers, my condolences are with the Camacho family. Way too young, 49 years old, just a year older than me. And just so sad when I heard the news about his passing. And the services were held last week. And I, you know, I had a chance to visit with them in February, probably just prior to COVID and everything was the last time I had a chance to sit down with Julian and Isaac. And they're at their office on Agnes. And just a great, genuine guy and just real humble servant. And they, you know, they did a great skill set and niche of work.
Yeah.
That, you know, you don't find many companies that doing that. And they've done big and small projects. They'll tear it down and haul it away. I asked, what about explosives? And they said, no, we don't do that, but we do everything else to tear down the building and the facility. And so just really sad when I heard the news. And it hurt me to hear that for him and his family and for his wife and his sons. So my condolences to the Camacho family on the passing of Julian.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaughn, I think, wants to add.
I do. He graduated with my daughter and son-in-law, and they actually went to the funeral. And there just was not a nicer young man. And I mean, such a loss to the community. I'd seen him about three weeks ago at breakfast one morning after church. And just such a terrible loss, anyway. He will definitely be missed. And he's like the American dream. They got that business. They worked so hard. He really, they really were.
They really did. And family is a word that best describes him. I told their boys at the rosary to take care of their mom. And I know that Julian taught them so well that they will. And he was also a great, great friend to the Junior Livestock Show. I don't know if you guys remember that. But they were big supporters and their children were participants and nieces and nephews. And I just, I just want to say, we lost a great friend to Wayzett County. And he got his start at BD Hold at Caterpillar. And sold a bunch of farm equipment, ranch equipment to my dad. And it was a great feeling for me to have my dad accompany me to the rosary. My dad always says, always remember how you got your start. And he just really loved that Julian helped us buy ranch equipment, you know, way back then. And then, like you said, it was an American dream because they learned the business. And they parlayed that into a real success story. And I know that the family is really mourning right now. But it's a very special thing when all commissioners know you and want to adjourn in your memory. Commissioner?
I talked to Isaac there at the funeral home and like he put it real, he was my brother but my best friend. You know, so you can't put any better than that, right?
Right.
And they were good guys, you know. We had coffee once in a while, but, you know, I mean, it's kind of hard. When 49 years old, you start to think, man, and it's because of a stroke and not because of COVID, but he.
That's correct. Not COVID-related.
They know that, but in our prayers, go out to the family and it definitely will be missed by everybody. I have another one. Amelia Phillips, a longtime Rockstown teacher, died of COVID-19 complications on September the 19th. And Phillips was a social studies teacher at Rockstown Early College High School and taught for 28 years and won Teacher of the Year three times. She was a very active and passionate teacher who challenged her students and went beyond her duties as a teacher. She took students groups on trips to Mexico and New York, organized beach cleanup with students and loved to travel. She also played guitar and sang in her church and was best known for her redemption of Landslide by Fleetwood Mac. She touched the lives of many and will always be remembered. She is related to Marcy Santos, Assistant Director, Community Service. And she will be missed by the family and our prayers go out to the family. That's it.
I love that song, Landslide. And I loved that story in the paper about her. And I just want to say thank you to the teachers as we go back into school, you know. We really want to protect them and think about them. And I just want to do an all-call. If you have PPE, you know, the Boys and Girls Club gave us, I don't know, maybe like 250 face shields. We were able to give those back to CCISD for their schools. And so if you're an organization, you're listening to this and you have access to any type of extra PPE like that, and you don't know what to do or how to get it to the right folks, let's give it to some teachers. So send them here and we'll make sure that it gets appropriately placed. Thank you for those adjournments. I hope it comforts the family to know those in Wayzett County will remember your loved one. And of course, we lost two people yesterday whose names we don't know, but whose souls we ask that they rest in peace. Okay, yes. Oh, Commissioner, sorry. Please forgive. Go ahead.
Out of sight, out of mind. I understand.
It is. I beg your pardon. You're not on my screen in front of me, that's why.
That's okay. And I certainly wanted to add my condolences to the Camacho family. Julian was a very nice man and I'm sorry for that loss and was not aware of that loss. So I wanted to add that as well. Wanted to also add Willie Vaden, passed away recently. Willie was the former mayor of Ingleside and very active in our community for many, many years. He was a Vietnam veteran and offered condolences to the Vaden family. Also Ricky Luna, who you might have seen, was, he was a teacher at Garza Gonzalez Charter School. He was involved in unfortunately a horrible accident where he, I think, got blindsided over the weekend or here recently. And so wanted to pass on condolences to the Luna family. And Judge, a good friend of all of Corpus Christi community, Jerry Kane. Jerry passed away recently and certainly we could go on for many, 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 many hours talking about all the contributions that Jerry and his family have made to the Coastal Bend. Wanted to pass on our condolences and certainly offer Jerry Kane in memory of today as well. That's what I have, Judge.
That was a big one. Thank you for that. They were my neighbors for, well, if you count the time that I was there as a girl over 40 years. And of course, he was a huge advocate for health and public health and was the chair of HHS for the state of Texas, as was his wife Glenda. He was also on the board of MD Anderson at one time, and then, of course, now Glenda. There was always an event at the Kane home because they entertained, you know, United States senators and governors and land commissioners and anybody that would make a difference for our community here at the Coastal Bend. It never mattered to me what party. It always meant that they were advocating for us and for our resources. So that's a huge loss and our extended sympathies go all to the entire Kane family. Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any others that we've missed? Okay, having heard no others, we do adjourn in all those memories that have been listed. And the time and the hour is 2:44 PM. We're adjourned.